Hi Macy.
Hey John, how's it going?
That's not where you normally sit, is it?
Yeah, it's just the lights off in the other room.
Do you guys have Christmas tree?
No.
Oh.
I don't even know where my Christmas decorations are right now.
You should get a little Charlie Brown one or something.
What?
You should get like a little Charlie Brown one.
Yeah, well, that's what we do have. Um, that's what we have, a little small one. My parents just like hand me down. Um, and yeah.
Harper is like, really wants a pink tinsel Christmas tree, like really bad.
That's awesome. I, what I, I told you when I was little, my mom had many ones that we put in our bedrooms. And they're like personalized, so she should get a little mini pink pencil for her room.
She wants to do that and have it up year round and have like seasonal ornaments and stuff.
That's really cool. That's really fun, actually.
Could be cool.
Yeah.
Did you eat food?
No, I, I do have a piece of salmon in the oven though.
That's good.
Yeah, just popped it in there. The drive home was crazy.
Wait, was it bad?
It was terrible. Yeah, it was, yeah, it was really bad.
Should be fun. I was gonna, and this ate like super long, so I got peanut butter M and M's for dinner.
That's good. Um, yeah. It was also terrible because we were all stuck behind a plow.
Oh.
Yeah, it was like a really long line of cars all stuck. But I was grateful that they were out for sure. And I, you know, you have to go slow anyway, so. Hi Jennifer.
Hello, how are you guys?
Doing well, how are you?
Good.
Just talking about the roads and storms and snow.
I know, it's kind of crazy. I got down to HQ. Um, and it's like a completely different world down there.
Is it?
They didn't even look like it snowed at all. When they saw the snow on my truck, they were like, oh gosh, it's crazy.
Are you guys getting a new HQ?
What's that?
Are you guys gonna get a new HQ?
A new HQ?
Yeah, are you guys getting a new build? I heard, I thought you guys might be getting a new building.
Um, no, not that I know of. They have been looking at potentially, I don't know if they're renting the property next door for more office space and parking. Cause our parking is pretty limited.
Sorry, I'm starting the livestream.
It gets cold in Town Hall at nighttime, like so fast.
You need to buy like five heaters like Rita does.
I have like a little one and it's like pretty cool. It's like just enough to keep my hands warm enough to type. Okay, so do you know Jen, on the co-responder, or wait, no, sorry. That's not relevant, never mind. I was reading co-responder as sheriff's contract and I was like, are we, but we're not approving that until next, like the third or something.
Yeah, I think that was, I, that's separate, right? Between you and Molly?
Boulder County stuff, but we got it figured out. So Kate, did you hear about what happened in the elevator today? Like, you know, you said, or what about the, uh, some guy got stuck in the elevator for some period of time? And he like freaked out, it was really bad.
Oh my gosh, that's terrible. No, I didn't hear about that. Me either.
Yeah, I guess it all worked out, but it was, the woman who died when she worked at the visitor's center Macy, her husband.
Oh my gosh. I'm sorry to hear that.
Yeah, I think he was okay, but I think it was a very scary moment. Like that would be scary. I could see that being a really scary thing.
For sure. I should mute myself. Did you guys hear my automatic cat feeder go off a minute ago?
Yeah, is that like, uh, the NFL?
I heard that too, so.
I've got, uh, Michael Penix Jr. is gonna start for the Falcons this weekend.
Oh, I was, I thought that was her cat thing. I was like, wow.
That would be really cool. You should like train your cat to like have a noise like that or something to.
It does, you can record, um, like a sound so that when it does dispense the food, like you can say like something to your cat. So I couldn't make it.
Dynamite thing when he's like, I mean, your food or whatever. That would be amazing. Do you guys have a robot kitty litter thingy?
We do not.
We used to have like an old fashioned one that worked terribly, but those new ones that are like cement mixers, they're really cool.
Yeah, except I, I was watching one of my shows and one of my, the people on the show had it and it broke. And so they were like trying to fix it and that would, what do you do then? I mean. The feeder is really nice because we can leave for a few days and she's good. Um, she also like doesn't bother me for food early in the morning or, or like ever. Um, she waits next to that thing instead of like, come see me. So it's good for those reasons, but yeah.
Jennifer, we were talking about getting a Town Hall cat to take care of our mouse problem. It'll be cool. You guys, you at the shirt, at the substation.
Yeah, I think you, I think they need one at the substation from what I've heard from the past.
I'm sure.
I haven't really seen anything run around yet.
That's good. I remember when Jennifer Finelevin was leaving, she said it was gonna take a special person to be okay, sitting in that substation with mice running through. Ty would know.
I never saw, I saw a squirrel in there one time. I never saw, uh, mice. I actually had to cut a hole in the wall because a squirrel ended up in the wall. Um, so I had all these holes in the wall that I cut to see where the squirrel was. And then he came bursting out of the hole and then E-Man caught him with a trash can. And in the office, so.
Christmas vacation.
Yeah. Yeah, essentially.
Britt. Do you got a heater in your shop, Ty?
Yeah, I have two. I have like a baseboard. Uh, one that kind of always goes and then I have like a, a bornado for like nights like this when it's like extra cold.
You need to get like an old potbelly stove out of like a train or something.
I, I've wanted to for a long time. I don't know, you, you've seen it. I don't know if I have room. It's so shit in here.
You can start digging down and have like a whole nother room.
I thought about that too. I think that takes permits. Yeah, no, I thought about getting one that mounts on the wall. That's a little more efficient. Um, and gets stuff off the floor. But not there yet. How's it at your house Macy? Is it snowing? Good?
Yes, lots of heavy snow. I'm actually texting John because the, I'm not able to get the streaming to connect and I'm assuming it's the storm.
Oh, okay.
I think that's okay. We'll figure it out. We can load it tomorrow. We'll have Peter load it tomorrow.
I'll keep working on it.
Okay. I don't think we have quorum yet either. One, two, three.
There we go.
Yep. Hi Tanya. Hi Tierney.
Hi everybody.
Hello, how's everybody?
We're just getting cold.
Wow, Chris, looks like you're in a sauna.
Yeah, it does look a little weird with that light blimby, doesn't it?
I'm on Mars right now.
Yeah, I'm on a business trip.
Macy was, were we having? Do you have everyone you had for quorum?
Um, that's actually a very good point since we do have a rather slim.
Four, right? Or quorum? Or is it five?
Yeah, we, we have four here, so that should be quorum.
Who runs our meetings in the absence of the Pro Tem and mayor?
Well, that's.
Years ago, we put it that anyone could.
I'm gonna go ahead and like.
The former mayor, I think maybe?
I would agree. I, I do see that Billy should be joining us virtually this evening. Nicole will be absent. Tanya, I'm glad you could make it. Um, I have, and then that's it. Yeah, everyone else should be.
About your house.
Yeah, I like Christmas. My scooter is falling now. He's not really happy up there, so.
Zip tie, uh, like a thin, uh, rock.
Like fish string?
In the center of your Christmas tree.
I should do that. Yeah.
Welcome to how I think about everything.
Zip ties.
Maybe. Hey, um, Britt, I'm running into some issues streaming up here. I'm wondering if maybe could you try to stream this one?
Yeah, I can try to stream. There's two different streams. Is there a difference?
Uh, I use custom streaming.
Okay.
I think they're the same.
It's loading.
Thank you.
Oh, I don't have permissions.
Okay, that does make sense. All right, I'll, I'm gonna keep working on it, so no worries. That's it. Who's this?
Is it sharing? That's weird. Oh, I don't know why. Okay, did it stop?
Yeah.
Well, we do have quorum. Do you guys want to wait a couple of minutes for Billy or do you want to start the meeting or what are you guys thinking?
Let's, let's give him like two minutes and then we'll start the meeting.
It's not like in college when your professor doesn't come for five minutes and so, you know.
We all get an A for the day and get to go home.
Class is canceled.
Yay. What's that Alice Cooper song? Like, uh, schools, uh, schools.
School's out forever.
Yeah, school's out forever. Right? Yep. I think, I think I might mean. School's, school's been blown to pieces, I think is one of them.
Yep, yep.
No, we don't want that one.
Not really acceptable nowadays, but.
I guess we need to do, every time we have a all virtual meeting now, we need to have a theme song that's playing while we wait. Like, you know, Jonathan Town Hall picks, picks the theme song for the night and that's what plays while we wait for, for quorum to show up or meetings start.
That sounds like a fun game.
My, my choice would be Neil Diamond, uh, Where It Begins. Think about it.
I like it.
Okay. No reaction. Where are you, Chris? Are you at your house or are you at something fancy?
No, no, this is my house. I just turned around to the other side of the bar so it looked a little less like I was dialing in from the eighth circle of hell. Um.
I'm just impressed with how festive Britt is got to set up.
I, yeah, I made.
Yeah, I have a Christmas sweater on too. It's dinosaurs. I try really hard. I have a tiny house.
That's, I have a, my house, my house is really tiny and I have this, I have a really narrow Christmas tree because I used to have a big one.
Yeah.
And then it took up half of my house, like. So you gotta work, work with what you got.
Exactly.
So it's been three minutes. Um, has anybody texted mayor Billy? Um.
I'll text him.
Without Nicole or Billy, it's like, it's kind of a pain. Somebody's got to.
Yeah, Jennifer, do you have insight?
Yeah, you can do it. Um, your rules of procedure don't really speak to who fills in as a chair. Um, but I would say Macy could call the meeting to order. And then if one of you wants to make a motion for another one to be the chair and then you could, you guys can vote on that.
Billy, Billy says phone, phone's been dead. I just started. I don't know what that means.
I'd say we get, we get started here. Let's, let's, we've got a number of things on here. Let's move, get moving.
All right, so it's December 17th, 2024. Um, this is Macy Calgares, town clerk, and I call the meeting to order at 7:06 PM. And I will take role. Um, right now, Mayor Billy is not with us, but should be joining us shortly. Mayor Pro Tem Sterling is absent. Do we have trustee Corvallon?
Yes.
Trustee Larson?
Yes.
Trustee Maris?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
And trustee Ty?
Yes.
Thank you all. And is there a motion for anybody to make to appoint a temporary chair for the meeting?
We'll make a motion to appoint Chris Larson temporary chair.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Ty?
Yes.
Trustee Larson?
Yes.
Trustee Mara?
Yes.
And trustee Corvallon?
Yes.
Thank you all and thank you Jennifer.
All right, thanks guys. It's weird to be back here. Looks like we have five things on the consent agenda, the warrants, a couple of meetings, minutes, uh, the co-responder contract and an update to the cora policy. Anyone have any questions regarding anything on the consent agenda? I actually, I have one just real quick clarification. I happened to spot something in the warrants. Um, we, are we still paying rent to Steven Tebow for the police? Uh, you know, for the shop in, in the BNF? So we're paying for the rent for the Boulder County Sheriff's Office?
Yes.
Okay.
That's something we want to work through next year. I think we have a lease, uh, period that we can talk about that. So that's something we need to figure out.
Okay, that just caught my eye and I wasn't around when that discussion happened. So I was curious that if that was just part of the deal was we pay, keep paying for the police shop. Cool. Any other questions or a motion regarding the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
And the motion in a second from trustee Miller and trustee Ty?
Trustee Larson?
Yes.
Trustee Maris?
Yes.
Trustee Ty?
Yes.
Trustee Corvallon?
Yes.
And trustee Miller?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion was approved.
It does look like Mayor Billy joined the meeting.
Billy Givlin. He's muted.
Do we need to make a formal transition back? Okay.
Until Billy can, uh, unmute himself.
Well, yeah, why don't, why don't we move into town staff reports while Billy is getting connected?
Well, mayor, chair and trustees, you have a staff report. It, uh, outlined some of the work we've been doing on the strategic goals of the plan as well as some updates on what I've been doing with my time. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions for Jonathan?
We can only assume you are doing as much as possible.
Go ahead and keep it busy around.
John, I have a question about Troy's report. Um, can I ask about that now or should I wait?
Sure, go ahead.
Um, he wrote that BCSO didn't provide a deputy for court in November. Do we know why? Or I guess Jennifer's on the line too. Um, Sergeant Mendez, if you want to speak to that.
So my understanding is that for the core position that's on Fridays, that is, uh, covered through extra duty. Um, what I try to do is get a deputy, if they're available, to be able to go to courts on Fridays. A couple of times they have been be able, they have been able to do that if they're not on calls or doing other things, uh, in ned. Um, it's very possible that a deputy just didn't get to make it. Um, that is something that is done through extra duty, which, uh, my understanding is that decided to stop. Um, and so that's actually not happening right now, uh, that there's actually somebody there every time to court, um, for that. Does that answer that question?
I think so. Thank you.
We lost Billy again. Any other questions for Jonathan or, um, I know, uh, town staff wise, we have Macy and Britt here as well for their, their staff reports. Macy, did you want to add anything to your staff report?
Um, not necessarily. Um, I don't have anything to add. Um, do you guys have any questions about? Anything or, you know, I reported on my, the core requests I've been fulfilling or, or any other questions you might have?
Uh, is that the, the one that you reference in your staff report? Is that the one that's complete or, because I know we just got another one. So we have two, right?
You're correct Luke. And the one that's referenced in my report is the one that is complete.
Okay. Trustee Larson, would you mind if I have Britt tell you guys a little bit about one thing in her staff report?
I was, I was gonna ask her next, so yeah, since we had her here, yeah, please.
Well, anything you guys have questions about, but I, Britt, I was wondering if you might give them an update about the level three charger and just some of the challenges we've had with that, just because I want to make sure people understand what's happening there.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so we are still working to get the level three, level three charger online. Um, it has, we've been working, so the charger that it was originally bought through a company called National Charger, our national car charger that is no longer a company. Um, thankfully we bought an extended warranty through like a third party company, um, who is, who we're working with now. Um, the contractor we hired to do the infrastructure, um, and actually hook up the, um, charger itself has been really great. Um, but they've had issues getting it online. Um, and so, um, right now we're working since we have this extended warranty, we're trying to negotiate. Um, they want to send an individual because our team and the infrastructure team, um, have not been able to get it up. They want to send one of their own individuals. Um, supposedly they will comp everything. It seems to be kind of like a computer issue or a board issue, something along that lines. Um, and they're trying to charge us for travel. Um, so I am trying to acquire this warranty, uh, that's gone through since Chris Pelletier's time to see if we, that somehow could be covered. So we don't have to pay for it. Um, but in the meantime, it's looking like it should, if everything goes well, officially be up by January 9th. Um, we have gotten the thumbs up for the refund, so the refund check will be coming back, which was, um, I believe $50,000 that we got through that grant. Um, however, unfortunately, I probably won't make my first set, my first set of reporting because we'll report to them quarterly. Um, it, it's just gonna be missing, missing some time. Um, but so far their staff has been very understanding of that. So still working on it. Um, I'm bugging them just about every day, if not every week. Um, so hopefully by January 9th, we'll be coming back and setting up some kind of ribbon cutting. Um, and it'll fully be up. So yeah, it's just been a long process, gone through many hands and I took it over with the help of, um, Cass, who is our new sustainability coordinator. And we're keeping it moving along with John's help too. So just, yeah, lots of, lots of issues, but we're, we're not gonna stop until we either get a new charger or get this one up.
Any other questions on that? I had a question about, um, Nikki's for even though I know she's not here. So, uh, she said that the rink was, um, underway. Do, do we have an opening date, expected opening date for the rink?
Yes, but I don't a hundred percent know that we're gonna hit it, but I would think you might see people out there within a few days from now. But that's like just really preliminary. So I think we could be excited about it. They are flooding it as we speak and building ice. So I think.
That's why, that's why I asked. Um, yeah, so maybe if we get that open before Christmas, like that, I think that'd just be such a win compared to last year.
I think we can be cautiously optimistic that that will happen.
I think we should, you know, when we do get it open or, you know, the day before, let's make a big, you know, social media blast to get that word out there because I know people have been questioning.
Yep.
Uh, any other questions for Britt, Macy, Jonathan, or any of the other town staff that we, they could relay on?
All good.
All right. Well, Jonathan, Macy, Britt, you guys are on here. Thank you so much for the work you guys put into these reports every month. Um, I know that they are just the best way for trying to keep up with what's going in on with all the various departments in town. Things that, you know, otherwise are flying under the radar that really should get more attention than they do and more thanks to you guys for all the work you do, the stuff that nobody sees and, you know, might warrant a line or a paragraph in the staff report. Really appreciate you guys highlighting that for us every month.
Thank you.
Uh, let's move into board of trustee reports. Uh, you know, the mayor and mayor pro tem both have written reports that are in the packet. And then a lot of us were kind of slacking this month, myself included. So verbal reports, we'll start down the list with, uh, Tanya, trustee Corvallon. Anything to verbally report?
Um, the, nothing deviated from the agenda. We, we set up our committees. Um, and then we allocated some extra money or towards buying new pots to replace the old big pots for the flowers. And, um, I remember, sorry, I had the agenda up in a second ago. I didn't take. The, let's play about, oh, the RFP for the summer concert series. We approved that. So that's going to be, well, hopefully it's already been published because I haven't heard about that though. Has anybody seen that out anywhere at the RFP?
I, Trustee Corvalon, I believe that there's a little issue getting it on the website and I think it is published on Rocky Mountain BidNet right now. And I think we'll see the results of that soon.
Good, good, good. So yeah, so that's good. I think we're a little ahead of last year, maybe, or about the same, but either way, that's, that's good. So we can get the ball rolling. So that was basically it.
Awesome. Thank you, Tanya. Um, and of course, anyone who has questions, speak up for the trustees as they are giving their reports. Um, next on the list is myself. VZA has still not met. Uh, so that's nice and easy. Um, and unfortunately I continue my streak of the Boulder County Consortium of Cities meeting on nights, which I have work events. This has been about four months in a row now. So, but I did speak with Commissioner Stoltzman uh, the day of the meeting. They were talking about early childhood education and out in Lafayette. Um, so been keeping in touch with the chair. She was sitting in for Commissioner Lockman, who normally chairs those, but um, just trying to keep the communication open despite not being able to attend the meetings for a little while. But hopefully in the new year, their meetings will not coincide with my business trips and nights with NASA people. Um, so hopefully I'll have more to report on that next year. Uh, Trustee Miller?
Yeah, I had some good community engagement meetings with, with people about Eldora and uh, so planning ProSAP meets tomorrow, so I don't have any recent ProSAP news. Uh, the only thing that we worked on was conversations about how to support their transition to electric small motor appliances for summer 2025, just to figure out some strategies for making that a little more viable with within the ARPS budget. The only things really of note in the last cycle.
Thanks, Luke. Trustee Ty, our Gold Star Trustee for getting his report in writing, anything to add?
Literal, literal writing.
You're muted, Ty.
Sorry. Um, I said, yeah, uh, I was, I said to myself, I'm just going to go down to town hall and fill in it really quick and and, uh, put it in Macy's box and it was a lot easier for me.
All right. Next, next year, you know, next, next January, let's all like handwrite ours and like seal them with wax seals and drop them off for Macy's. So she has something to look forward to.
We all need to get really good at calligraphy, like.
Oh, there we go. Yes. Um, last but not least, Tierney, Trustee Maris.
Uh, I have nothing to report this month. We've got our next NEPA DAC, the EcoPassboard meeting tomorrow. So hopefully I'll have more to report next time we report.
All right. Thanks, Tierney. Uh, just doing a quick scan here and I still don't see Mayor Billy on the list. Um, so thank you all. Uh, let's move forward into our informational items and hand the board over to Jonathan for the State of the Town address.
Well, Chair and Trustees, while I pull this up, I just want to tell you what I've done here is kind of gone off the presentation you've been using for this. I think next year this will change a little bit, but this is really the last strategic update that you'll have for your current plan. Next year, once the comprehensive plan is adopted, we've talked about, uh, you know, redoing these strategic goals. So that's one of the things I want to kind of show you is that we've really made good progress on these goals. And I think in a lot of ways, we've accomplished what you set out to do two years ago. So here, just really brief agenda. I've just got a little update and then highlights from 2024. And of course, my highlights start on July 8th. So, you know, like the stuff from Miranda, there's some of it. I know I've, I've gotten a lot of context there, but um, we've got other staff members here if you have questions that happened earlier in the year. So this first part, I've just walked you through the strategic goals. The first was to foster a strong organizational culture where town employees are valued and the town is an employer of choice. Some of the highlights we have that have been completed are that you, um, in this current budget, this is kind of like going from this current standpoint. We did align some of the employee salaries just a little bit better. They were still off from that last adjustment that was made. So this included a lot of our frontline staff at the visitor center and the community center specifically, as well as two people at town hall. Um, one, like one of our front desk people and then another person at town hall. We also will probably need to do another salary survey next year. That's typically every two or every three year process. But I do think just kind of like in a, looking at general things, I think we're still pretty well aligned into the range. We're not, you know, at the tops by any means, but we're within the range, which is really good. Um, the other goal here was establish professional development plans for each employee in alignment with the 18 month goal plan. These professional development plans will outline trainings to be completed in 2024 to advance knowledge, skills and abilities. Those are all developed. Miranda did that before she left, or she left, she left. Um, I have just finished my employee evaluations and I've been updating them. And then we've been working with everyone to make sure they're fully relevant right now. When Miranda left, one thing that was really interesting is a lot of the staff became super independent. And that's a really good thing for us. We've got a couple of them on the call here. Josh Davis has really done a great job on streets. They've all done a really good job. Britt has really taken over a lot of our community development processes, which is awesome. She's also overseeing a staff member now, which is really great. So I went ahead and we updated those plans to kind of reflect where we are as an organization now and really just thinking about capacity to do work in the future. Second strategic goal was to protect the town's water rights, ensuring delivery of water to residents and businesses is continuous. There's several goals here. The first is to continue the diligent development of our reservoir water rights, including by filing an application for a finding of reasonable diligence for the water right in Water Court by, or February 2024. This application was filed by that deadline and we're still currently in Water Court. Um, we've been evaluating current or potential alternative water storage solutions. And that work is really through Dean Italian Water, who does our engineering work on looking at how that could work and what opportunities we have. Um, just to make sure the flow of water into town is continuous. Finally, continue pursuing the engineering design permits and permissions necessary for construction of upstream storage to secure important objectives of fortifying the town's water rights, water delivery and safe and resilient water. We have been looking at grant and water loan opportunities that we can pursue when it's time for that to happen. We've also been working with JVA, as you know, on that tenure capital plan to improve our water and wastewater infrastructure and a water model for the town. In January, we'll have a water and wastewater rate study recommendation from Raftellus. If you remember, we had that first meeting back in October. And that second meeting that kind of makes that recommendation will be coming in January. We have just a little bit more work to tighten that up. And, uh, I think it's on track to be completed. Okay. And goal three is to promote early sustainable and resilient development in the town through thoughtful, engaged and equitable planning process. We've been doing a lot of work in this space and this is a lot of Britt. Um, sorry, guys. Uh, the first is understanding the housing needs for Netherland by completing the housing needs assessment by December 2023. This was completed on time. In 2024, Britt started working to identify town owned lots that might be useful for housing. She's been working with Jennifer Madsen on that. In 2025, those efforts will continue so that we can reach our Prop 123 requirements. We anticipate that that, uh, the results of that town lot study will be coming to you early in 2025. We've also been doing a lot of work, Britt specifically working with folks on ways that we can meet those Prop 123 requirements. If you remember, we need to build, or well, we need to have ready for permit 13 units of like deed restricted housing so that we can meet those requirements. If we don't meet those requirements, it's basically we sit out the program for a year. So the consequences are relatively minimal for that. But I do think that we have some good irons in the fire there. Second goal here was complete the tourism management, marketing and branding study projects to help locals communicate to existing tourists about our identity and how Netherland wants to be treated by April 2024. This first draft of this was completed, but there were some significant questions about the tourism plan that was created. And so it needs to come forward to you for approval, the final draft of this plan. Peter has been working on it and I will have a draft of it early in January that I'm going to be working through to make sure it kind of aligns with what I know about the direction we had. That should be coming to you no later than March for approval.
John, can I make a quick comment?
Sure.
Is there any way to workshop that sentence? Um, but I just don't like it, like how Netherland wants to be treated and too long. I feel like, um, I can send you some suggestions, but.
Yeah, I think in the.
It's just very awkward.
Yeah, that was just like copied out of the plan or whatever.
Well, I know. I never liked it. I just think it's odd. That's my opinion. And I'll, I'll send you some suggestions of what I think sounds better. Maybe Peter can think about it too.
Okay, that would be great. Um, third goal here is revise water sewer rates and plant investment fees based on the results of a professional rate study by August 2024. That rate study, we've had the first presentation, the second one is coming in January. Um, establish a long range guiding document for Netherland to achieve its vision and goals by completing comprehensive plan update with an initial focus on a central business district, district, sub area plan by December 2024. This plan draft was presented to PC and the BOT in the fall of 24. The second draft was something that we all kind of wanted. And so Britt and I worked pretty extensively with the consultants on that to try to make it more, honestly, to make it sound like Netherland and just to correct a few things. That work is progressing. Planning Commission recently got a kind of like a rough second draft of that plan and had a couple of other feedback points. And we think that we'll have like the final kind of printing, like the pretty version of the plan with all the pictures and all the things ready to go in January. So we're kind of still on that same timeline of looking at this January, February for approval. Um, another strategy here was identify what is needed to create an equitable transportation system incorporating all modes of transportation and aligns with community goals and objectives by completing the multimodal transportation plan by July of 2024. Secure funding to implement short term strategies identified with the plan by December 2024. We have the plan coming to you this evening for approval. So that is in your packet and that's a later approval or action item for this evening. Um, then finally we have update the community goals and create a trails connectivity plan under the parks department assets by completing the ProSAP, ProST plan amendments by December 2024. This plan got slightly delayed because Pro, or ProSAP wanted to look at the strategic plan and the comprehensive plan first. This should be something that they're working on next year, but some of this work continues. We've been working on some of the critical trail alignments. And I think we're ready to move forward with them potentially next year. So I think that work is just a little bit delayed from what we originally thought. Uh, strategy four, maintain and modernize infrastructure to reduce public safety and health risks and improve the quality of life in our town. This one's a pretty big one. We got a couple of really big infrastructure grants that work kind of like on the, I guess, on the north side or the west side of town. This first one is called Safer Main Streets. It was supposed, well, it has to be completed by June of 2025. We've had some significant challenges working with CDOT on this, but I just heard yesterday that we have concurrence on it, which means that we can put it out to bid. So we are going to meet our timeline for this grant, which is going to make Rita very happy because it means that grant pass through is going to be off of our budget, which makes our revenue look a lot better. But basically what this is going to do is it's going to make crosswalk and sidewalk improvements on the highway. It installs a signalized crosswalk at First Street and Highway 119, which is basically, it's not like a full light. It's one of those blinkers like they have in Boulder on Canyon. Um, it installs a signalized crosswalk between RTD parking right and the library. And it replaces the crusher fine sidewalks on the north side of the highway by, by October. So I really do think this one will be done next summer. We should be able to get this done relatively quickly. The other big infrastructure grant that we've been working on is called Tips. This is one that does a lot of similar work, but basically it is, uh, it included the electric vehicle charging station. It installs bike racks. It builds a sidewalk on West First Street over here by town hall connecting RTD to the visitor center. And then it does some work on Jefferson Street here and adds like quite a bit of actual public parking. And so this one has been really delayed and there's actually something that we need to bring forward to you at our next meeting. Um, this grant had federal funding in it and originally I think we thought it was state funding when we originally got it. But the reason that's important is because it's subject to the Uniform Act. And so we have to get a couple of temporary easements to do this construction work. And to do that, we have to get a consultant that is certified to do that with the federal government. And so there is going to be a cost increase on this project. However, it can be covered under the cost of the grant, basically, and we should be fine ultimately on like no cost overrun here. And the goal would be is to approve that, that change order for that contract in January so that we can get the contractor in place and then we can start working on, on getting those easements done in this project out to bid. It's fully designed and shovel ready. Come on in.
How are you?
Good. How are you?
I'm doing well, thanks.
I've got Mark Schlosser here in my office. He's joining me for the meeting. Um, other street infrastructure projects, Streets Department this year executed a summer road improvement plan. And this was looking at our roads, trying to improve erosion, rutting, potholes and proper drainage. And to really make a good asset management plan that outlines proper maintenance techniques for the different issues we have. This plan exists and Josh and the road crew really did a good job this summer of starting to tackle some of those bigger jobs. We, I just recently talked to our sustainability coordinator, Cass. One of the things that we have challenges with in Netherland is we don't use any product on our roads to help them stick together better. Because of, you know, usually that's like a magplor situation that you put into the dirt. So we have been working with our sustainability coordinator to see if we can identify an alternate product that's in line with our goals. Just to try to see if we can hold our roads together a little bit better because some of the dirt ones, you know, the second it rains or snows, we have, we have problems. So we are working on that. Another thing we're doing is working on drainage ditches. Uh, Streets Crew did a lot of this work in summer 2024. And, you know, some of it was finding culverts that have been buried for a long time or, or drains and stuff like that. And so they've been working on unplugging culverts, making sure they're all working and functional. And, uh, working on developing a plan so that we can execute that plan every summer. And in theory, that work should get easier and easier as we move forward. We've also been working to add aggregate to the roads where needed to make sure we have a good stable foundation for the road surfaces. Um, so that they just resist wear and tear better. Some of our roads just, they're down to bedrock and we just need to make sure we build them up enough to have good vehicular traffic. And then finally, there was a grant or a goal line here to identify funding for the installation of driveway culverts to lessen the financial burden on homeowners who do not have culverts, but who need them. We are working through this goal. It's a challenging one, but that's something that we've got on our lesson has been a, a goal for our streets. Um, emergency preparedness. This is an area that I think we have some growth to do. This year, as you know, we had Troy, who used to work for the PD, he's now our emergency manager, as well as our court administrative manager. And what was done is he was created that made a management position to create this emergency operations plan and to start building an emergency management department for the town. This is a challenging endeavor and like, there's a lot of work here that needs to happen with Boulder Office of Disaster Management, partners in Gilpin County and like Ned Fire and people like that. So basically this year, what happened was is we created this emergency operations plan. It got slightly delayed because it really needs to work through ODM. In the event of an emergency here, they're likely going to be running the show, but we need to make sure that all of our stakeholders, including Boulder County Sheriff's Office is all on the same page. So we have contact information. Everybody knows where to go and, you know, all of that kind of thing. So we've got the kind of the foundational work of the plan done. Next year, this is going to be a critical effort for staff is to get this emergency management. Um, emergency preparedness up and running perfectly. You know, the other goals we had this year were we put the money into the budget for training and education for emergency and disaster management preparedness. This money went out along with the, the plan that the watershed did. And then disseminate information to all homeowners regarding tax incentives or funding to have fire mitigation conducted on their property through the wildfire partners program by August 2024. They've been doing this outreach. They were at like the harvest events, and then they've been at several other community events and just making sure people know what can happen. There are some other groups that are working. ProSAP had a huge volunteer day in Moose Meadows and they did a lot of mitig. There are some other groups that are working. Pro Sap had a huge volunteer day in Moose Meadows and they did a lot of mitigation work over there. There's been some groups working in Old Town and and trying to help out with just folks who don't have the funding to do mitigation on their own properties. So I think what I'm trying to say is we've done a lot of work in this space, but this emergency management effort really should be a critical effort as a part of our strategic plan moving forward and making sure we've got policies, procedures and training in place. Uh, emergency egress development. This is a pretty big project. We're trying to complete the Big Springs Egress Study soon. It was supposed to be completed by December 2024 and it's not. We were able to secure funding through a congressionally directed spending request from Congressman Joe Nogus to uh, look at building an egress route out of Big Springs uh, on the other side of the neighborhood, on the, I guess, the east side of the neighborhood where there's not a really clear egress point. Back a few years ago, there was a a route identified that ultimately wasn't selected just because of the context of where the route was. So JVA went back to the drawing board and came up with four routes. Um, these routes are kind of at a conceptual level of design, knowing that they're possible and kind of the estimated probable cost for them. The next step we need to do is to have a meeting of stakeholders that kind of understand the project and the different, the different um, needs of the community. So that would be like the community group, Ned Fire especially, the Boulder Sheriff's Office. Um, City of Boulder has been involved in this and Boulder County Open Space. Different groups, just to make sure that we are able to kind of quantify which route is the best for us from a safety perspective. We ultimately really like to design two routes out of the neighborhood, even if we're only able to construct one right now. But having two shovel ready routes on the, on the table for funding purposes would be really great. So that's kind of our work. We want to get this done. We think it's reasonable to get it done by summertime of next year.
John, um, why is it that JVA was not able to um, complete or even come back to the BOT with any of these choices? I know we did that hike back in September or whenever it was. Um, is there, I don't, I still don't understand why this, they weren't able to bring it back for us to identify at least one route to begin working on. I mean, it was pretty clear. There was one easy route that was definitely a winner and then there was the desire to go down to the canyon, which is more complicated and and we had opposition from landowners. I'm just curious why they couldn't bring it back to us.
I think it's the strategy of what needs to happen and looking at the price estimates and making sure that we have a full document for review purposes so that we can really make a good analysis. And I, I guess in terms of their timeline, we've had the preferred routes for a while and what we really need to do is have a conversation about how we want to tackle this next phase. And that's something I can bring to you very soon, like in January potentially.
Yeah, it just gets harder in the winter to walk these routes. As you remember, uh, walking the route was a real eye opener for JVA because on paper they were convinced they had a good route and on the reality on the ground, it wasn't. So um, yeah, I'm just, I'm a little concerned. They're going to have it done by summer, but how is anyone going to be able to walk these routes in the middle winter in order for them? How long do they think it's going to take? Once we decide which route to go to actually map it out and make it shovel ready?
Not long. They have all the data that they need and for the conceptual level of design, it's really like a 30% design for the most part, maybe a little better on some of the other, the easier routes. But what they would be doing is is kind of the final CAD work basically to get these things designed. They're not super complicated. It's more about context of like where the routes go and all that kind of thing. So one of the other challenges, we got this, I think we got the roots back right when we got very serious about the budget and it's just a matter of timing and capacity just to get these two you guys in a way that we can look at. The other thing is match because we have to be careful about how we budget the match for this. If you remember, we have like half of it matched into 2025 and half into 2026. There is a possibility we can do all of this work for half the match that we originally thought. Uh, JVA is working on that, too, but this project, one way or the other, like you said, we've got to bring it forward and if there are challenges like that where we do need to go out and walk again, that may possibly delay it.
Well, I mean, I, I just feel like um, when they walked it, they instantly realized that what they had mapped out was unrealistic. So um, if they come up with anything new like a route down to the canyon, um, that's going to hundred percent have to be walked. Um, if they go with the option, the B option, I think we can all, we've all walked it and we know the terrain, but. All right. Thank you.
We'll get it finished as soon as humanly possible here. The other uh, egress development, um, there was a goal to secure three and a half million in external funding for a secondary bridge to enable the concept or the commencement of design and construction uh, for a project, an additional bridge across the creek. Um, there was a application for congressionally directed spending in March of 2024. It was not awarded likely because the project is not shovel ready. We don't have a location fully determined here. We don't have a shovel ready design, anything like that. And so in 2025, what we need to do is prioritize finalizing a location for the bridge and kind of getting to a level of design that they all feel comfortable with so that we can apply for that funding. Uh, asset management, the goal here is to develop the management system which will be used by the emergency services, parks, streets and utility department by December of 2024. This is largely a GIS platform that we've been working on so far. The GIS platform is being worked on by Lindsanforth, who's a GIS consultant in town. And she has done quite a bit of work. So as you see here, we've got the snow routes. There is an inventory of assets that is in place on there, which recently was updated to include sewer and water lines that the town has, including manholes and things like that, which is a pretty significant thing for our water and wastewater team. Um, there's other data points that we can include in the system. We just need to continue working on this and adding things to the system as we track. I think also one of the things we'll be doing in the future is exploring like how we do our capital improvement plan and making sure that those assets are tracked alongside the GIS assets too, but that's something that we would want to be talking about next year. In the parks and recreation space, our team has been doing quite a bit. Um, the first goal here was to improve the beautification of our reservoir by completing the Barker Meadows Park, which was paid for by Great Outdoors Colorado Grant by 2023. This grant was completed. Uh, Gercio Field is like kind of one of the more notable pieces here. We are monitoring the situation at Gercio Field. It's not irrigated or anything like that. And so we've been really making sure we're paying attention to what's happening there. And that, and our party is just going to stay on top of it and make sure that that things are progressing there. And I think what we'll want to do is especially once it comes to springtime, take a look at the condition of the field and assess it and make sure that our plan is is progressing as it should, which we don't, you know, that's what we got to figure out. Um, second goal here, improve the aesthetics and safety of our ice rink and pickleball tennis courts by securing funding for the design and redevelopment by June of 2024. This was really close to the Miranda transition and honestly, it's a project that wasn't able to be completed. We didn't have the capacity for it. We do have match for this and recently we've been talking about an alternative for the the hockey rink, a couple of them. We may be able to work with a partner like the Colorado Avalanche to help sponsor the rink because they do come up here sometimes, you know, and do some really cool stuff with the kids. There's also a possibility that we could look at creating like a ground pump geothermal chilling system for the ice, which would greatly improve the reliability of the ice and might match some of our sustainability goals uh, long term. And that might be something we can fund through the programs we've identified as well. And so we've been looking at that a bit, too. But ultimately, I think we are probably in a place where we can revisit the plan to apply for this project next year. Third goal, secure funding to improve ADA accessibility at Chapita Park by upgrading playground equipment. Um, Pro Sap has been working on this project a little bit. We haven't applied for funding yet, but this is a goal that we'll have moving forward. Um, and the final goal here, increase engagement in youth activities, sports, music, art, dance, or any other youth activities through the distribution of metropolitan football funds among local organizations by December 2024. This was a Nikki Dunn program and she did a great job with it. This distribution occurred already last month. There is a small amount of funds remaining and what we'd like to do is bring a second round of funding forward next year to disperse those. Town hall maintenance. This is a pretty big one. Uh, in 2024, there was built into the budget for maintenance needs at town hall, like a maintenance fund. Nikki's been working on a project to replace the front windows and doors. It's not completed yet. We've had a hard time finding a contractor who can do that work. We also had a goal of applying for historic business designation or building designation and possible grant funding for repairs. This goal is not completed. I am adding a recommendation here that we should really consider whether or not the town could become what's known as a certified local government for historic preservation in 2025. This would give us access to the state historic preservation office and preservation funds through the National Park Service to preserve the historic buildings that we do have. We have quite a bit of, you know, while we don't have a huge collection of historic buildings, they do have a huge collection of needs. Town Hall is in need of some significant updates and repairs and it's going to be a project we need to tackle at some point and being able to to have a little bit of local control over our historic resources could be a really strong thing for the town to do and collaborative with the county as well. Uh, final goal here is address the maintenance needs at Town Hall by September 2024. Parks Department has been really doing a good job on the urgent maintenance here. I think we're probably going to need to do like a structural assessment and kind of really go through all the needs that we have on these buildings and really kind of think about a plan. And that probably is something we want to tackle next year or the year after. Broadband. Uh, work with Clear Creek and Gilpin County to select a consultant to develop a plan for extending broadband in Netherlands, including funding opportunities for middle mile services by October 2024. In January, we received a grant with Claire Creek and Gilpin County in collaborations with Mavericks Broadband to extend fiber optic broadband services to Netherlands, Gilpin and Boulder County. One cool thing about this is we won a what's called a Metro Vision Award from Dr. Cog, um, which is a pretty prestigious nerdy government award, but it's pretty cool that we're able to do that. This project is, Britt, I'm going to lean on you. Britt just met with them, but it hasn't begun yet, but Britt, can you give a brief Mavericks update?
Yeah, um, so Mavericks has started um, the permitting process. Um, C dot takes a little bit longer, so they really have started kind of doing their outreach with us locally and then they're working on it through C dot. Um, so hopefully I will have updates here in the next couple of weeks when we meet again. Um, there is kind of like this side grant funding that we've also um, Gilpin and Claire Creek threw us in as well. It's through bead supporting and we're waiting to hear about that awarding in January. It really goes coincide with this. I don't think there's any matching aspects with that. Um, but it would just continue to keep um, getting that fiber through and get some of those areas that weren't captured here. Um, so yeah, more to come on that, but really they're just kind of in the process of getting all their paperwork together, getting the permitting done um, and prepping for when the weather is good to start getting it going.
Thank you.
Mm hmm.
Sustainability.
I think Luke has a question.
Yeah, I did. So I saw this reference as a middle mile funding. Does this project include last mile? Like two actual homes or is this really only getting that kind of from the trunk up into the?
Um, it will, I believe it is to the homes. I'll confirm that and send out kind of like an update email when I get on my next meeting to you guys if that works.
Cool. Yeah, yeah. I'm really curious if they're planning to actually run, you know, the lines all the way to people's homes.
Yeah, that's what I, that's kind of what I've been informed on is Maverick plans to run it to people's homes.
They're trying to be an SP, so I think that that it's at least a component of the project. Okay, sustainability. This is another one that recently moved into Brit's world. Further consideration, analysis or analyze the benefits of hiring a full time coordinator in 2024 to manage and coordinate various sustainability projects, programs and initiatives in collaboration with other town departments and stakeholders and develop, recommend and implement strategies to achieve sustainability goals in alignment with the town's planning documents and the strategic plan. Uh, our previous coordinator Leah Haney resigned from her position in July of 2024. We recently hired Cass. Who is she on here, Britt?
Uh, she was.
She may not be here anymore, but she, we recently hired her. She's been doing a very good job. As a part of that, she originally was sustainability coordinator was living in Parks Department for both revenue purposes and to kind of for management purposes, but as we were thinking about it with this goal of hiring a full time coordinator and making the position self sufficient as it's funded currently through a Boulder grant that runs out where we can't use it anymore for a coordinator position. We thought it might make sense to move her into Brit's department so that she can start working on some of the sustainability fees and things like that, so we can make sure that that position is sustainable. She's currently supporting the Sustainability Advisory Board and kind of working through their processes and procedures to um, align them with kind of current town goals and to update all the sustainability goals. I think she's been doing an amazing job. She's really kind of stepped into the team and she's living really close by now. We would like to bring her full time and that's something that we're working on and hopefully we'll have the funding support for that in 2025. Britt, is there anything you'd add to that or?
Um, just adding, we did, we went ahead, um, we went, we came up before you guys, I think it was last week or last meeting. Um, we submitted the grant to get the funding to match uh, for next years for hers and we don't foresee that having any issues as we've been talking to that contact directly. So that's been um, that's been submitted and we should hear back here shortly.
Britt and Cass also identified a grant that could put solar onto the wastewater plant and really significantly impact its operations. So they went and did a tour of the plant today and then we were going to look at the feasibility of this because there may be no match required. So that would be something that would be coming before you next year as well, if if we figure out that it's a a good thing.
Yeah, it would be a micro grid and we could do micro grid and um, get the wastewater plant um, some um, solar panels and yeah, the maximum the match would be if we were to have a match would be five percent.
All right. Goal five, augment and leverage the town's financial resources to support desired levels of services, economic growth and to ensure upkeep of infrastructure. First one here was review, evaluate and choose three opportunities for additional financial resources by October 2023 from the following. Wastewater and Water user rates and plant investment fees. Um, we have done that rate study that's coming to you in early in 2025 as we discussed. Paid parking, which required updating the code. Uh, this was budgeted for in 2024. We did delay it, but we do anticipate that trial program rolling out for summer 2025 as we previously discussed. The contract for this will be coming to you in January or February so that we can do all the public engagement and community engagement and get all the residents and employees set up before anything were to start. Uh, fee for EV charging stations, this is something that was implemented, although we did determine that the fee for the level two was set too high, which was limiting the use of the chargers. You reset those fees earlier this fall and staff is just going to monitor it as we get um, a bigger data set just to make sure we've got it set appropriately. Uh, the last one here was franchise agreements with private utilities for use of towns right away. We did not do any work in this space in 2024. Review, evaluate and choose opportunities for additional finance, financial resources by October 23, which included park recreation participant fees. Nikki did add fees for park and recreation services, which was in the fee schedule. Uh, promotion of special events and advertising opportunities. There were several special events held in 2024 such as the Ned 150, Nether Days and the Holiday Mountain Market. We are thinking that we'll continue to develop, improve, improve the operation of these events in 2025. And that's work that would also happen in collaboration with the DDA. Uh, pursuit of grants. Um, one that we did receive this year was an LPC Local Planning Capacity Grant from the Department of Local Affairs for Housing Coordinator. That grant is working through the process right now in Lyons. We're pretty much ready to go on the net site. So as soon as they give us the green light, we can get that person hired and they're going to live in our community development department. And then the last thing here was just leverage the town's current tourism in order to increase sales tax revenue. And that is something we're working through on that tourism plan and um, it's kind of part of the comprehensive plan and the multimodal plan. And there's a lot of different planning efforts that have been kind of done to talk about what that might look like. Um, strategy number six, listen to the voices of our workers, residents and property owners to implement changes to code from the results of the housing needs assessment. A lot of work has been going on here and again, this is largely things that Britt has been working on in conjunction with Jennifer and Miranda and myself. But the first one was coordinate with advisory boards and commissions to identify the most impactful code changes by 2023. This initial phase of work was completed. It's likely something we want to continue doing is to go through that code, especially chapter 16, chapter six, and just keep looking at how we're doing things. Uh, create policy language for the Board of Trustees review by November 2023. This was completed. Um, solidify code changes for housing by December 2023. This was completed. However, Britt does have some additional changes that we need to consider in 2025 and she's been working on that. And I want to say we're bringing that first week. Uh, it's coming in January or February. Uh, it's coming in January or February. And then.
Yeah, it'll be January.
Okay, Britt knows. Uh, apply for second phase of grant funding to implement housing infrastructure by June of twenty twenty four. When we have the housing coordinator, that's, that's gonna be something that we're really kind of tackling. If we come up with a Prop one, two, three project as well that we can apply for funding for that fits within our kind of financial situation right now, I think we would bring that to you too, just to keep projects moving. All right, this is just a couple of twenty twenty four accomplishments that I wanted to mention. The first one is just we completed the twenty twenty five budget process. I am pretty proud of ourselves because I think we did a pretty good job in a pretty significantly challenging situation. I think we were fairly transparent about the problems we were having and had a good community conversation about that. And I'd really like that to continue as we move into twenty twenty five, so we continue to think about, um, resiliency for the Netherland budget. Um, I've told my department heads we're moving into budget process in February. I have you guys scheduled for your first budget information item in May, but it won't be intense. We'll just be talking about timelines and, you know, how we're gonna set the meetings up and things like that. But I'd like to just continue to be proactive in the budgetary process. I'd really like to start working on building out like a three-year model for what we're expecting so that we can really be proactive in how we're, we're forecasting our revenue and things like that. Um, another project that happened this year that was largely led by Andrew Bliss was the completion of the lead service line inventory project. We're able to say Netherland is lead-free, which of course doesn't mean that there's no lead anywhere in Netherland. But by and large, we, we are, it's not a problem here because I think most of the construction has newer pipes and things like that. So we'll continue working on that as the state requires and just to make sure people stay safe. We do water testing frequently too. That's kind of, um, assigned by the state in certain areas of our system just to make sure we're not finding lead in those results, like in the water that we're pulling from different places. But the service line inventory project was a huge success for us. Um, another one is the, we partnered with Gilpin County and also with Lyons on this multi-jurisdictional regional housing authority, authority feasibility assessment. And basically what that means is that we want to think about whether or not we can create a peak-to-peak housing authority that understands the context of Western Boulder County and like what is needed here in terms of housing because it just isn't the same as what Eastern Boulder County needs. That has an RFP out right now, and I guess that includes Gilpin too, but, but peak-to-peak area. That RFP is out now, and I think next year we should be, um, that consultant should be on board. Gilpin County is managing that project. We don't really have any involvement other than determining whether or not we want to participate. Um, in twenty twenty four, we successfully completed the municipal election and the special red referendum on, on Teens Inc. That was Macy's work, and I really want to just commend her. She's become a expert in municipal clerking. She's almost a certified municipal clerk, which is a really big accomplishment. She's also our longest-tenured clerk that has ever served in Netherland, which is pretty cool. So, um, I think that's a pretty good, a bit, you know, a good accolade for her. Um, and that's a lot of work. Those elections take quite a bit of her time, and I just, um, I'm glad that we got them done. That's a good thing. Another goal, we completed the grit removal projects at the wastewater treatment facility. We have another one coming. Um, basically what that means is like we have sand filters, and sometimes the sand, if something happens, they end up in places it's not supposed to be. So we just have to remove it, and that project, the first one was completed. And like I said, there'll be ongoing efforts just to make sure we keep our system proactively maintained. Um, I put navigated Excel power outage in a major snow event. We all know last spring was pretty rough, that heavy, heavy wet snow. We also know Excel is continuing to turn power out more often than they used to, just to protect the community. Um, Dawn at the community center has been really working to make sure that that's a safe place for people to go if the power does go out. We're gonna continue to work on infrastructure like microgrids and battery backups to make sure that people have power in those events if we need it. And then that microgrid at the community center is getting interconnected, and that's been an ongoing struggle with Excel, but that should be happening very soon. There was a project to, um, build downtown capacity with Downtown Colorado Inc. and the DDA that happened, uh, this spring, and I actually got to participate in that project even though I was working in Idaho Springs at the time, which was pretty cool. So that project is really about reimagining how downtown works more than anything, like not necessarily from an infrastructure perspective, but just as a kind of a downtown perspective. It's kind of interesting, and if you guys haven't had a chance to read that or the public, I'm happy to share it. Um, we have a new social media strategy that was developed with the Colorado Tourism Office. Uh, that has been kind of in the progress of, of coming to fruition. I'd really like us to consider, we have budget in the, well, you have money in the budget for a new website in twenty twenty five that would be ADA accessible. That would make a lot of these strategies a lot more effective from a digital perspective, and we'd like to bring that forward in January too, to try to get that working. And the last thing here is just the transition between Miranda and myself. I think that was a, a lift. And I just want to, I know I've said it like a million times, but thank staff, um, and Jennifer and the board for the support you gave us during that time. It was, it was difficult, I think, just to make sure everybody was up to speed. And we have a lot of people who stepped up here and did a lot of unsung things, so I just am extremely thankful for them for that.
Yeah, a big, a big thanks to Nikki Dunn on that one as well. You know, she, uh, she really stepped into some.
I'm sorry I talked fast through that. That was a longer presentation, but if you have any questions or if there's anything I didn't talk about that you're curious about, please let me know and I can answer.
Nice work. Thank you, John.
Incredible. Congratulations to everyone in the town. Just impressive.
Netherland's a pretty great place. The spirit here is pretty strong, and I just think that when everybody works together, amazing things happen, and it's been pretty evident this year, so.
Mayor Billy, are you back online?
Uh, I hope so. Can you hear me?
Great. This meeting is all yours again.
Well, I was thinking you were a little out of practice, dude, so I thought you were just, I don't know.
You make, you make it sound like I need to practice to do this again. I don't.
No, I know. Sorry, everyone. Um, technology's great when it works, and my phone died. And it's amazing when your phone dies in New Mexico, how dead in the water you are, pretty much in every aspect. So, um, thank you. Uh, I, I listened to most of that. That was the state of the town. Was that the grants as well? Apologize. John?
Not yet. I've got one more for you, but that one.
Okay, okay. Um, no, I, I definitely appreciate, you know, everything I heard. Um, any other questions or anything for John? Now we'll, we'll launch you right into the grants update.
All right. In the future, I won't make you do both of these on the same day, I promise.
That's fine, but I will, I will say, you know, obviously, it seemed a little weird since I'm finally in the meeting, but, um, we do have four action items afterwards, so we'll get through the grants and some of the ones sometime.
I'm gonna kind of like gloss over the things we just talked about, but I'm just gonna kind of run you through so you have all this stuff here. Uh, ARPA, the big thing here is that ARPA funds have to be appropriated basically this year. We made a change to what we were doing with the ARPA funds to support the co-responder program. As you know, from that consent item, Boulder County unexpectedly raised the cost slightly on us. So we had originally budgeted a hundred and twenty thousand dollars total for the, what we were doing, and we took that money from what we had, um, kind of dedicated for affordable housing, the leftover part that we weren't going to be able to spend in time. And the total cost of the co-responder program for December and twenty twenty five is a hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars. That is a delta there that's fairly significant, but we do have the money in the budget to cover it, and Reid and I just need to manage that to make sure we're covered. Other ARPA funds, we've got them for broad improvements. Um, there's that nonprofit support funding, which we haven't really figured out how to spend that yet anyway, so.
John, um, is that a hundred and thirty seven thousand just her salary? That's what she gets paid?
It's her salary and some of the support for her, like the, you know, the stuff you don't see, like her benefits and her computer and car and things like that, insurance.
And I mean, they, do they realize that without their help next year, we won't be able to afford it?
Yes, and that is something the county manager has committed to me to work with us on. Uh, they understand that she responds to a bigger area than just Netherland. And so I think, um, and I don't know, Jennifer, if you have any comments, but I think she's been helpful having her here and going on some of these calls, which I think we all know that. And I think the county recognizes this too, that we've got to figure out a better way, more sustainable way to provide co-responder services.
Thank you.
Um, Big Springs Egress, we talked about, as you know, we split the grant match for that. That's the big thing. But this grant is gonna come under budget, so I think like likely we are gonna be shovel-ready by this, by no matter what, very soon. And, uh, as commit, or trustee Corvallon said, we need to, we really need to make sure that we get this wrapped up, and we need to do it in a way that, you know, if we need to go walking up there, we may need to pause a little bit on some of this, but we'll keep working on this one, and we'll bring this back forward pretty quickly. Co-responder program, I just mentioned this one. Uh, we do have it funded. We're good for twenty twenty five, but we do need to work on twenty twenty six. Comp plan, you will see that comp plan completed probably in January or February, just depending on planning commission is done. The second draft is largely done, and the last set of their revisions are, are probably gonna be completed over the Christmas break. Digitization project, this is a project to digitize resources in town. We were able to buy some of the equipment needed for this. Uh, funding has run out through the SIPA grant, but this is something that we've been talking about, uh, continuing. One of the big goals for the Clerks Department that Macy and I were just discussing is updating our document retention policy and then also going through our documents and making sure they're organized and, um, everything's in good shape and we're not, you know, everything's working. So this is work that will continue even though this grant is over. Electric vehicle infrastructure, Britt mentioned this, the level three charger is not functional, but we are embroiled in a, uh, I won't call it a battle, but a effort to get a new level three charger or that one, um, running. So one way or the other, we're getting that level three charger going. The reimbursement is in progress. We just need to get everything working. Environmental sustainability matching funds, this is what we use for Cass's position. We are in theory in the last year of funding for that program. However, the county has opened the door that we might be able to use it for one more year's support for the employee, which I think we would be interested in. Um, we can apply for funding through this program after that, just for different things. One important note about this program is the Boulder County Commissioners have decided to add, uh, kind of a menu of sustainability policies that they want the town to adopt to continue receiving funding through this. And some of them are not as possible for a mountain community as they are in the, in the more urban communities. So we've been working with their sustainability office just to try to determine what the, the best path forward for, for Netherland is so that we can continue receiving this funding. Grit removal project I mentioned, this was completed, and we are working on further projects, um, just to make sure that our plant stays functional. Multimodal plan, this is coming to this evening for adoption. Safer Main Streets, we discussed, we should be able to put this out to bid very soon and complete it pretty quickly. This is the tips project. Um, as I mentioned, we'll have in January a change order coming to you of approximately twenty seven thousand dollars to hire the consultant we need to do the temporary easement, which is a little silly, but it's what's required, and I think we have the budget in the grant. So I think at this point with what we spent, we just, my recommendation is we move forward with that and get it done. Tourism management, the work with CTO is largely completed. Um, we got the money to do the visitor center budget for branding and creativity. That project is completed. We also have been working on that tourism management plan, and we will be bringing that forward relatively soon once I'm able to get the draft from Peter and edit it, and then we'll, we'll bring it forward for consideration. Partner grants, the ARPA Mental Health Funding Grant, this is a grant that we got as a pass-through. So it's kind of an interesting situation. We're not what's called the fiscal agent for this. Um, Boulder County got the money, and it was basically given to, uh, Peak-to-Peak Housing and Human Services to run mental health trainings. Katrina Harms has been doing this program. As you know, like funding for her position was eliminated in the recent Commissioner's budget. But we have, the way our agreement is structured is that she can just continue to do these trainings, and then the funding can continue to go to her through peak-to-peak. So we may have to have an MOU come to you in January just to make sure that we memorialize that. But by and large, um, I think operations can continue how we have, and they're currently ongoing. Bear resistant trash can containers, this was a program through Boulder Bear Coalition to purchase bear-proof trash cans for residents of Old Town. Um, there were additional containers that were given out outside of Old Town for people once, once there was extras. This is completed. Broadband fiber installation, as Britt noted, we're waiting on C dot concurrence, and then this project will begin. Um, they're also applying for that bead funding, which just gives additional support to the Mavericks team to build their system. There's also, Britt participates in a broadband group that meets between Clear Creek, Gilpin, and us, and they're working on identifying like service areas that don't have adequate broadband or cell phone coverage, and that's part of their ongoing work. So that's kind of like future forward. Uh, the climate pollution reduction planning grant, this is called different things. Most recently it was called Furbin, but it's an electrification program that Dr. Cog is rolling out, and there has been a lot of work done by, on this by Cass. Um, we don't have funding through this, but basically it is going to set up programs that we can use to support and improve things for residents, like putting heat pumps in houses or electrifying buildings downtown or like a lot of different kinds. There's been a lot of different ideas. So I think what will happen as these programs come forward, Cass will bring them to you for, um, approval if we want, if we're thinking that it would be good to participate. Colorado Wildfire Protection Plan, this was completed this year. They did a presentation to you. Um, the Boulder Watershed Collection did a presentation earlier this year, uh, to approve this plan. And basically what it does is just update our, our protection plan. Congressional directed spending, this is, we've had a couple of different requests. One was for Big Springs Egress. That program is, is, uh, working its way forward. The second was for this bridge. As I mentioned, we need to determine where that bridge is gonna go and some feasibility work probably before we apply again. These are, like, the application will probably come out relatively soon, like this spring. So if we want to apply again, we should be shovel-ready for that. Well, maybe not shovel-ready, but conceptually ready for that. This is a good funding source too for other things. You can get, you know, two to five million dollars for a project. So it's something that if we're not using it for the bridge, we might want to identify some of our other critical infrastructure needs to apply for. Uh, local planning capacity, housing coordinator, we received a grant from DOLA, the Department of Local Affairs, in partnership with Lyons to hire a housing coordinator. It requires forty thousand matching funds to be split between the towns. Our work is complete for this. We're waiting on Lyons to finalize their portion, and then we're gonna hire this person. This person will work in community development and will split their time between Lyons and Netherland. Oh, sorry. Uh, multi-jurisdictional housing authority, we talked about that before. Uh, that's working its way through. It's an RFP status in Gilpin. They'll lead the project, and we'll just, uh, staff will participate just to make sure Netherland is represented. Any potential participation in this program would be through an IGA, and that would be something the board would approve later. A multi-jurisdictional housing authority has statutory authority, um, to provision and protect housing in a community. Um, and there's about like twenty seven strategies they can use to do that, everything from funding sources to, um, making sure housing is safe and quality and things like that. And we will bring more information forward on this item if, um, as it progresses. Volunteer driver program, this is another pass-through to Peak-to-Peak Housing and Human Services originally. This has been a bearer of a program because Dr. Cog has required insurance requirements from the town that we were not able to meet. So it was significantly delayed. We have worked that out now, and we are just in the process of setting up the job description because we had, originally this was gonna be all volunteers, but we need to have the manager actually be a town employee to cover them through the insurance. That's gonna happen, uh, we're gonna have everything set up and then, um, hopefully be implementing this plan pretty quickly in the new year. Future grants, uh, Colorado Water Plan, Water Conservation Board, they offer a lot of different funding sources for water projects. Um, we really need to do some additional legal analysis to make sure these grants we receive would be complete or would be compatible with how our funds are set up. Our funds receive sales tax, so we just need to make sure the analysis is done to make sure that we'd be compliant with Tabor for any money that we might take for water projects. I don't think that there's a huge problem, but we just need to make sure we dot the i's and cross the t's there. And we have no projects currently in the pipeline for this program anyway. Uh, Ice Rank and Tennis Park, we were talking about that a little bit. There's opportunities maybe to put, uh, um, geothermal chilling system in or just to make some improvements over there, and that's something that we'd like to work on next year. Wildfire mitigation grants, ProSAP has been working on mitigation efforts. Wildfire mitigation grants, ProSab has been working on mitigation efforts around town and they've been doing a huge amount of work over in Moose Meadows this fall, this is a few weeks ago, but it was not a few weeks ago. Um, there's also a Boulder County Strategic Fuels Mitigation Program and then we also found a FEMA program that allows probably us to get up to three million dollars to do some mitigation work, including some projects that would really protect our water plant. Um, we need to like add some protection in case of like a mudslide, if there were a fire, so that it doesn't get into the plant and and mess up our systems for water purification. And that is a really good source for that. So we are currently in the progress of looking at those grants and then applications would be brought to the board for approval. Um, DOLA EIAF funds, these are really good grant programs for smaller communities like Nederland. Grants, there's two tiers of grants, 200,000 dollar grants and then up to a million dollar grants. They do require a one-to-one match, which has always been a historical impediment to Nederland, however, uh, the DDA has talked about, there's possibilities that we could use some of their funding as match to do some of the downtown infrastructure projects. And that would be a really good way for us to leverage the maximum impact for those funding sources, so that we can really get um, you know, as much money as we can into things. There's also other ways that we might get that match, there's really, it's a really easy bar to meet to get that match. Um, so I think this is something, they're usually kind of, there's two big rounds usually, there's one in the spring and one in the fall. And these should always be on our radar to apply for if we have a project, we should never not apply for them if, if we have a project and money. And that was my grants presentation, do you guys have any questions for me or anything?
On that last one, DOLA, um, could those funds be used to like clean up down under the ground where, you know, if, when we're like looking to fix some of our main water lines and as Ron puts, as Ron tells us, there's like cars buried under there, like to help clean up that kind of stuff?
Yes, they like, that's the work they like doing the best.
Yes.
Nice.
Other questions if folks have for John on grants?
Wait, did anybody else lose sound?
It got quiet for me.
That's, that's me, sorry. Uh, I, I needed a blemstick. Um, so John, yeah, um, just keep us posted of course as we go through the year. Um, and any next steps on any grants? Along the way.
We will keep it moving. There was also one thing that came up after my presentation. A co-responder grant came out that could fund maybe even two years of that program. And I just want to tell you, if I have an opportunity that it makes sense, I'd like to bring that forward on the third for approval. Um, because it would, it would help us a lot, it would let us run that program for two years probably, so.
Awesome. Awesome. Thanks, John, appreciate it. Um, thanks for those back to back presentations. With that, we'll move into our action items for the night, we have two action item, four action items, I'm sorry. Um, and uh, I think we'll go ahead and just go right into the first one. Um, and let me know, John, if you want to move the fourth one up front so that Mark isn't here all night long.
Is that okay?
Do that first, actually. Yeah, I see him in the background, I'm thinking that, that seems like that would be kind to Mark to, actually, we're going to go with the fourth action item and, and meet that first and then we'll move to transportation.
Well, Mayor.
No pressure, Mark.
Mayor and trustees, I've got Mark Schlosser here with me, he's a Parks employee. Every year, the town staff votes on a town employee that kind of exemplifies what we think about for service, this is a pretty longstanding tradition. Usually this is a staff thing, but this year I was thinking, wouldn't it be cool if we had a resolution of the board? Just to recognize what Mark or whoever does that does. Um, and, and I also, I told Chris about this too, Chris Kelly, just to make sure he knew. But we have a lot of great town employees, I, I really want to just, I know I said that before, but I would like to read this resolution to you. Um, it's a resolution of appreciation for Mark Schlosser and recognition of his outstanding service and dedication as the Town of Nederland's Employee of the Year for 2024. Whereas Mark Schlosser, an employee of the Parks Department consistently demonstrates an exceptional work ethic going above and beyond sort of the Town of Nederland and its residents. And whereas Mark's commitment, reliability and positive attitude shine through his willingness to take on extra responsibilities, cover additional hours and complete projects with meticulous attention to detail. And whereas his contributions to maintaining town facilities, assisting with community events and ensuring infrastructure function smoothly often extend beyond regular working hours. And whereas Mark's colleagues recognize his leadership, dedication to safety, sense of humor, kindness and the respect he shows to coworkers in the community. And whereas his peers have honored him by voting him the 2024 Employee of the Year for his hard work, integrity and dedication to making Nederland a better place. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Town of Nederland that the Town of Nederland hereby expresses its heartfelt appreciation to Mark Schlosser for his outstanding service and dedication. Mark exemplifies the values of our community and we are proud to recognize him as the 2024 Employee of the Year. The Board of Trustees extends our sincere, it's our sincere thanks and congratulations for his commit, his continued commitment to excellence. I have to tell you all that the really, the big thing that stood out on his comments was that he has a magnificent beard, like everybody recognized that fact. So I just wanted to throw that in there as well. So we put this up.
Yeah, I don't think the resemblance to Brad O'Morstell was necessarily what, what, what I think made this happen for you, but you know, possibly.
Well, I, my intention is
It can't hurt.
If, if you pass this resolution, I'd like to frame this for him so I can give it to him as a memento and then he does get a little bonus at our Christmas party of, uh, that'll come tomorrow for him from the staff for their appreciation.
John, can I also add to that, that Mark has been um, my MVP. Um, Parks could not do what Parks has done this entire year without Mark's dedication and knowledge. Um, he came to me full of knowledge of the rank and construction and all kinds of things and I'm very lucky to have him as my employee.
Thank you. Are there any, this is an action item, so we'll ask for clarifying questions and then um, actually go to public comment, then we'll come back. Final vote on the resolution, any clarifying questions on this? Mark or for John, Nikki? It's not, we'll go to public comment, we have public comment on um, on this resolution to recognize Mark um, for his dedication to town and for his winning of this Warrior's Employee of the Year for 2024. No one in the room obviously, so if, if you want to talk, just go ahead and speak up, I'm, I have a razor here. And we'll go ahead and bring it back um, for any, any more discussion. Um, couple of pages in the package. Last five pages there, Sean.
Mark, thank you so much, thank you, you know. It's, it's a tough one to have to pick a single employee of this town to do it, but I think you are definitely a clear asset for the town, for the Parks Department, for, you know, for really what makes Nederland the incredible place it is and thank you so much for everything you've done this year and, you know, everything you're going to keep doing, everything you've done in the past.
Yeah, absolutely. That was just in the print.
With that, I, I would make a motion to approve Resolution 2024 dash 44, a resolution of appreciation for Mark Schlosser in recognition of his outstanding service and dedication as the Town of Nederland's Employee of the Year for 2024.
Second. So I get that? Todd beat me to it.
Yes.
Macy, um, if you want to um, call the roll?
Of course. Trustee Larson?
Yes.
Trustee Maris?
Yes, definitely.
Trustee Miller?
Yes, absolutely.
Trustee Ty?
Yes, absolutely.
Trustee Corvallon?
Yes.
And Mayor Billy?
Yes.
Thank you all, the motion's approved.
The motion is approved, thanks, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Formal award giving to you soon and, and I'm sorry we weren't in person tonight, but uh, uh, thanks for all the work that you do, you know, just, you're always in good spirits and it sounds like always willing to lend a hand and have a, you know, appreciated your extra kind of interest in the hockey programs and warning me of how much money lies ahead if our kids stay in hockey, so. Thanks, Mark.
Yeah.
Thank you so much and, and um,
Your name?
Yeah.
With that, we're going to go to the, what's labeled as the first action item for the night, which is uh, starring um, Carly, uh, with Fair and Peers and uh, just the multimodal transport, transportation plans adopted.
Go ahead, Carly. Before Carly starts, I'm just going to kind of give them an intro. Um, as you guys know, we have been working on this plan since um, June 6th, 2023. A lot of task force meetings, um, and public or engagement, in-person engagement um, from the Community Thanksgiving to Mount Market, Ned 150, Farmers Market. Um, a lot of surveys, pop-up events, um, so quite a lot of feedback we've gotten here. Uh, just to remind you guys of the next steps. Um, we, if adopted tonight, um, we'll move into integrating this into our strategic plan. Um, plan would be to start some project implementation or project planning in um, quarters one to two. Um, and then kind of uh, start looking into funding and grant acquisition to really figure out um, kind of when we can do this prioritization. Um, I'll go ahead and kick it over to Carly, um, to give you a presentation. Um, she's really going to be going through some of those changes met, uh, made based on the feedback, um, they have received.
Great, thanks, Brett. So just a, a quick agenda, uh, do project recap, it's been a couple of months since we were um, speaking to you last, so just a reminder of folks of the goals of the project and the progression and scope of the, the effort. And then wanted to walk through each of the comments we heard in the October Board of Trustees meeting and how we responded to those comments and incorporating those changes into the final plan. You've also now seen the formatted version of the plan, so would love to answer any questions at the updated version of the plan that you have in your packet. So project recap, uh, as a reminder, this is a long range plan, so we're looking at 20, 25 years ahead and creating a vision for transportation in Nederland, but also identifying short-term action items in order to be able to implement and reach that long-term vision. So the plan over the last year and a half had a lot of community engagement throughout the process, as Brett mentioned, so we had two phases of engagement. The first coincided with an existing conditions analysis where we looked at a snapshot in time, what's on the ground in Nederland today from a perspective of walking, biking, transit and driving and programs. And then supplemented that data with how the community feels and their challenges of traveling both within Nederland and from Nederland across the region. And then from that information, we created a set of draft recommendations and uh, action items in order to implement those recommendations, including funding strategy, um, prioritization of those recommendations, other partners that need to be at the table. And then funding of how do we make sure that we can get those on the ground and phasing of those. Um, and also a monitoring table to be able to track success and implementation of this MTP over time. And then here we are with the, the near final MTP. Um, as has been mentioned in the, the state of uh, the community, the comprehensive plan, downtown summer plan has been happening in coordination with this effort as there's a link between land use and transportation. Outreach recap, again, two phases, um, we had over 400 touchpoints with the community, so that's dots on interactive maps, survey responses, people coming up to our tent at the Farmers Market. Um, other interactions at intercept events and open houses, so this was a really robust effort. And we heard from a, a pretty great cross-section of the community, mostly people who live in Netherlands, but also people who uh, work in Netherlands or um, are visiting and, and tourists as well. So the first phase wedge was focused on supplementing existing conditions and the second phase was focused on comments on the draft recommendations. Um, so I won't go through each of the recommendations, but just a reminder for folks, these are multimodal recommendations, so uh, specific locations as far as people driving, really focused on improving safety, improving congestion intuitiveness of the network. A lot of recommendations on parking as well, thinking about managing parking demand in the short term and then opportunities to, to increase parking supply in the long term. And then walking and biking, so this is focused on sidewalks, crosswalks and then trails as well. And then how do we make sure that people feel safe walking along and across our roadways in Nederland? And how do we slow vehicles and manage speeds in coordination with that? Opportunities for transit, so this is on the service side as well as the programmatic side, working with partners from mountain rides to Boulder County to RTD. And then future transit opportunities with other potential partners such as Eldora, thinking about shuttles um, between these key destinations and hubs, as well as an intra-Netherland transportation opportunity on key event days where we see a really high demand for accessing kind of further out parking spaces into the downtown area and an opportunity for a potential shuttle or circulator in the long term. And then program recommendations, so I've laid those out here and there are also some policies to think about and, and consider formalizing. Um, maintenance from all modes to make sure that people are, are able to uh, use the network efficiently and effectively, obviously limited resources has been, uh, John, Jonathan has presented on, but thinking about what are the budget implications for that, which is an important part of this MTP. Wayfinding, um, which is already, there's already a plan developed, but honing based stuff of the comprehensive plan and the transportation plan. Transportation demand management programs to shift modes and make sure people are informed of all their options. Staff capacity, thinking about, especially focusing on grants of potential future position or part of a position to be able to apply to those grants, to be able to implement some of these recommendations. Safety is intertwined in all of these, but from a programmatic side, the education about um, user behavior, that's people driving, people biking. Um, especially new potential infrastructure and treatment such as roundabout or uh, future rapid reticular flashing beacons that we talked about from the C dot Safer Main Streets grant. Community education about um, how to use the network as well as just modes available. Um, access to the curb, so intuitiveness of parking and loading zones. Amenities such as trash cans and just creating shade and benches, so particularly at bus stops, but um, as well it trails and other key locations to improve the, the uh, kind of the customer service features and just that level of comfort for people walking, biking, taking transit. EV infrastructure, talked about some charging earlier in this meeting, um, but continuing to grow that both the, the fleet, the town fleet and then as well as charging stations to, to promote residents and um, visitors to, to be able to, to transition to electric vehicles. And then other emerging mobility and changes in, in technology that influence transportation to make sure this is a long-range plan, that this plan is future-proofed and that Netherlands continuing to evolve as transportation and technology evolves. So implementation, so four big moves or, or top priorities. Parking management, Jonathan mentioned paid parking, it is just right on the, the heels of this effort. Um, and then there's a lot of other great opportunities, kind of parking adjacent recommendations like wayfinding and building out the pedestrian network so that we're better optimizing the available parking that is present. Um, the roundabout, so just to meet C dot uh, guidelines and standards for a single lane roundabout, there's a lot of signage changes to geometry that we talked about in the October meeting, um, that need to happen and take place and, and C dot's on board about, with this as well as we presented these concept designs to them. Um, the intersection of Lakeview, um, and, and 119 and, and Bridge, um, there's a jog in the intersection and a lot of queuing as, as folks wait to make left turns. And so we'll talk about this as, came up in the October meeting, but this is a high priority and identified as the number one recommendation from this whole entire plan by the community. And then speed, speed management, so we talked to C dot about what traffic coming opportunities exist on state-owned roadways. We also identify opportunities on local roadways to visually narrow the roadway in order to make sure that especially as people are entering town, um, they're slowing their speeds and, and knowing that they're about to enter a community with um, some vulnerable populations with a, a lot of more uh, pedestrian activity, um, than they experience coming up the canyon. So just going through the plan, um, components on the implementation side, so we've prioritized all projects and identified short-term actions for a lot of them to, uh, to be able to give these first initial steps for the Town of Nederland to take. We've identified funding sources in association with each project, so a lot of these projects are, will be really competitive for certain specific grants, and so we've identified what those grants are that they'll be eligible for, planning level costs. Planning level cost estimates, other partners that need to be at the table such as C dot, Boulder County, who um, are also going to be important to, to have their buy-off in their coordination in order to make these projects implementable. And then a monitoring plan for the community to be able to track how they've implemented the recommendations from the MTP over time. And that's important for community transparency um, and accountability as well. So I wanted to share the comments that we received at the last October BOT meeting and how we've made changes to the plan accordingly. So one was more traffic coming at the town entry points. Um, so three town entry points. One, we, we already had the Eldora Roundabout, so focusing now on East Street, kind of at the post office as you come into town from Boulder Canyon and then at the community center as well. Um, so at East Street, we have a short and a long-term recommendation. And we'll share concept designs for these. So median in the short term, a little bit lower cost. A roundabout is feasible, but more expensive in the long term. And then at the community center, um, a proposed raised median. There aren't the pedestrian volumes to warrant a marked crosswalk according to the C dot pedestrian crossing guidelines, but the raised median will, will slow speeds and adds that in a visual um, constraint and narrowing of the roadway. And then a pedestrian crossing at the community center. So um, mentioned this and I'll show the concept, but we identified it as a location to continue to track pedestrian volumes and apply uh, volume, speed and pedestrian volumes to the C dot pedestrian crossing guidelines to see the appropriate pedestrian crossing, crossing treatment type is. Um, but identified this as a location for, for consideration in future. And then the Lakeview Drive intersection and some concerns about those eastbound left turns. So um, we looked back at, at our synchroanalysis at the traffic study and this does have an improvement over the existing conditions. Uh, it was noted that the bank will be redeveloped and potential future increase in traffic volumes might create some challenges for left-turning vehicles. Um, so we added to the plan to collect more traffic counts after the, the bank is redeveloped to, to understand what those peak volumes are and what the, the peak conditions are um, to better assess those changes in the, the future. So I'll just show the concept designs for each of those changes that, that we've made. So starting at East Street, so this is a short-term recommendation for a raised median here. So it's a pretty wide travel lanes and so this raised median will add that uh, kind of visual narrowing. It also adds an opportunity for pedestrian refuge island uh, for pedestrians to be able to cross Boulder Canyon in two phases here. The long-term recommendation is a roundabout. This will have more significant uh, reduction in speeds. Um, but is more expensive, but it does, the footprint does fit. Obviously, there's some great challenges here, so it will be expensive. Uh, there's slight kind of shift to the, to the uh, west um, to be able to fit in this footprint without having to, to do as much cut and fill. The community center intersection, um, so again, a raised median, but as I mentioned, pedestrian volumes are pretty low. So there's a desire line here, so potentially formalizing this desire line will uh, increase pedestrian volumes. So if you look at C dot pedestrian crossing guidelines, you do need a certain number of, of pedestrians um, in order to, to warrant marking this crossing. So something just to consider to continue to track. And then this is a, a location on the map. So this median does have a refuge, so similar to the um, the East Street concept, having a two-stage crossing opportunity will help. And then Lakeview. So this was the, the concept, the same concept that, that we showed previously. So there's currently the same challenge that was noted, which is that left-turning vehicles have to cross the queue of vehicles waiting. Let, sorry, eastbound left-turning vehicles have to cross the queue of southbound left-turning vehicles. So this in the existing conditions is, is consistent. You've got the vehicles queuing up as folks wait, wait to make a southbound left onto Lakeview. Um, so in the current conditions, it's, it's really similar. We looked at the traffic volumes and the number of cars queuing in this left turn pocket and it's pretty minimal. Um, so I think people will naturally find a gap in that queue as they do today. So we noted in the plan as redevelopment occurs to collect traffic counts again and to update that traffic analysis based up those future volumes. Any questions? So I guess focus specifically on changes we made to the plan recently, but um, anything about the, the plan in general as you've been reviewing it?
Something I just um, I'd heard a number thrown out at one of our meets, subarea plan meetings a while ago. What kind of price, you know, ballpark, you know, I mean ranges for like the cost of a roundabout, how many? What are the general ranges? Would you guess? Estimate. I can't hear you.
Sorry, I went on mute as um, as I was asking the question. So I think it's three to five million. Let me look. So the roundabout at the community center is two million. And then I think we, as play the level cost estimates, uh, pretty consistent in the two to three million range for, for each of those roundabouts. So East Street as well, two billion.
Two, three million. Okay. Other clarifying questions for Carly?
Um, yeah, sorry, this Luke, I um, I did have a quick question on uh, the map in um, the uh, I guess figure 15 is the um, trails. Map. And I've I know you guys have put a ton of effort into this. I'm sorry that I didn't catch it sooner, but it looks like there's actually quite a bit of inaccuracy in that map as, as far as like what is um, what's, what's currently an official trail and what's not. Um. And uh, yeah, so like the, the top, that trail right across the top there. Um, that's a, you have proposed formal, formal position of an informal trail. That's already a, an official um, Mud Lake Open Space Trail. It's fully established and maintained by Boulder County. Um, the ones right below that, that fork through um, what we're calling Moose Meadows are all formalized with town and trail markers. Um. So I, I don't know if, I don't know how important that is in the scheme of this thing, but just if we're trying to make it accurate to what is, what the current conditions. If you want, I can, I can just uh, just send you an annotated thing that maybe gives it a little bit more. Just so we don't take up the meeting.
Yeah, this is really helpful and there, there wasn't a shape file that existed prior to this effort of trail. So we went out in the field and walked everything with Nikki and then came back to our, our desk and, and marked it up again with Nikki on a call. So um, potentially this communication between, between us and Nikki, but that'd be great if you can provide that feedback and we'll definitely update the map as well as the associated table. We want to make sure to, to get it right. Thank you for feedback.
Well, and yeah, so then, and my, another question, it was actually on the associated table is it wasn't clear on which, which thing is which in, in that table.
Yes, there's an appendix. There's an appendix where we label the version with the numbered um, IDs is pretty messy. So we moved that to an appendix. And so that aligns with the table. So you can better see which lines go with which, which lines on the map go with which rows in the table. So that's in the appendix, which should be linked as well.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Yeah, because I was just like, it just, all of them just say like, formalize existing trail or formalize existing desire line and.
And it's hard. They don't have names. So appendix C and um, I think you received the link to the appendix. Let me know.
Yeah, totally. Yeah, okay, cool. Yeah, no, thank you. Thank you so much for that. I appreciate it.
Yeah, it's good feedback.
Any other questions?
Any other clarifying questions for Carly? We'll go to public comment here in a minute, but. There we go. We'll go ahead and go to public comment. Any comments from folks online regarding multimodal transportation plan? Not seeing any hands raised. So hearing that, I'll go ahead and bring it back to the board for um, any, any needed discussion? And then as this is an action item, um, motions are, proposed motions are on page 157.
I'll make first comment here. Uh, Carly, thank you for putting this together. I know the, the full report has a lot of things in it. A lot of, you know, details and projects and plans. I, I'm a little disappointed that the, all the implementation, all sort of the, the targeted projects are not in any way, shape or form multimodal. They're all car-based. They're all parking speed and you know, roundabouts. Um, it's a little disappointing, you know, I, I understand that that's what came out of the, the public input and things like that, but it, it kind of betrays the whole multimodal part of the study. Um, I know we've struggled over the years with trying to get, you know, pedestrian and bike infrastructure town. And it's definitely hard for a town like we are where people are, you know, tied to their cars. And particularly those visiting our town are tied to their cars. But you know, I would have liked to seen a little bit more, you know, emphasis on trying to get people out of their cars. But I still very much appreciate the work you did and absolutely going to vote to approve it.
And potentially is how I frame those recommendations, but they all have a really important pedestrian component. The speed one is purely about making it more comfortable for people walking. So slowing vehicle speeds is to make sure we're, we're prioritizing um, the, the roadway and the transportation network for pedestrians. So a reframing is good feedback of, of making it about, you know, improved pedestrian safety by, by slowing speeds. And the roundabout is primarily focused on improving those pedestrian crossings by uh, adding signage, adding a, a median for, for refuge and enhancing that, that marked crossway, marked crosswalk. Um, but that's great feedback on, on how to frame those recommendations.
Yep. Um, and yeah, otherwise, yeah, I think, you know, we can move forward with this. I'm, you know, a little worried that it's yet another study we have that's going to sit on the shelf and um, personally, I would struggle very, very hard to vote for any of these roundabouts at all. Given their cost and given the fact that, you know, you know, instead of that, we could be building Big Springs Egress, which we've been trying to do for a long time and which I think has a much higher impact than, you know, a roundabout by the post office where I think uh, over the years, I've seen one or two people actually on foot. But I think it is great to have these plans on, on the books as we can move forward and you know, as grants become available, we can try and tackle them. But I think um, you know, personally, as we tackle this, you know, anything that we try to do on the peak-to-peak and which is frankly C dot's responsibility. I don't see us wanting to spend a lot of our own towns money to fix C dot's problems. Personal view.
Thanks, Chris. Any, any other comments?
Carly, I just want to jump in. I'm sorry, go ahead, Tanya. You can go first.
Um, I want to say I do agree with Chris. Um, I think, I think it's nice to have the study. I don't think it was necessary to do it at all. Um, but your work was done very well, Carly. Um, and I'd like to say that just because we approve this doesn't mean we can't create our own ideas for enhancing pedestrian and trails um, and connectors in our town. Uh, just because it's not in the plan and doesn't mean we can't prioritize that. I, I would hate to see the future BOTs simply refer to this when it comes to making plans regarding what we know is good for our town and um, that, that's always my worry um, about, you know, adopting these, these studies because in the future, people will be like, well, the study said this is a priority. Um, instead of um, you know, using our own imagination and and knowledge, inherent knowledge from actually living in this town about what is actually more of a priority. Is it more of a priority to enhance bike and walkways in our town so that locals can get to town without getting hit by a car and creating paths within our, our land? And I don't, well, I mean, like I say, I, I think it is more important in some ga, I think a left-hand turn, it's most things are just very obvious and we should, now this is done, let's do it. And then um, because that's always been the holdup, well, let's wait for the study before we can make a left turn on Lakeview, you know? It's like, well, we know we need a left turn there. Um, so uh, I think it's great. I will vote to approve it, but um, I, I don't want this to just be our binding document for all the transportation decisions in the future. I still think we need to have discussions.
Yes, I agree with Tanya that it's always great to have continued discussions and, and base decisions based not only on studies, but also on, on inherent knowledge. But to kind of provide a, a different perspective, Carly, I think you've done a great job. And I actually really, I really like all of the potential, like you have a, a great layout of all the plans, the priorities based on community feedback. And the costs involved as well, which I think was something that I was a little concerned about was not kind of knowing what these costs were. And it was just going to be a list of things that we could potentially do. Um, but I think that it's structured and, and very clear um, and concrete, which I appreciate and gives us a roadmap for moving forward, which um, can help guide future boards as well. So um, I, I think it was really well done. Obviously, it's very, very detailed um, and very thorough. So thank you for your work and I'm going to be voting to approve as well.
Other comments?
Yeah, I was gonna chime in. Yeah, kind of, you know, the same, some of the same uh, feeling about multimodal and in a lot, the goals and, and objectives being car-centric. Um, but, but I, I did see that kind of, you know, in the the, you know, the actual plan, the um, sort of vision and guiding principles there is uh, to provide a comprehensive set of transportation options in order to make traveling to or within Netherlands without an automobile convenient accessible. Is the first guiding principle. So I, I think that that kind of, you know, covers, you know, in a lot of ways, you know, that, that, that goal. Um, just that, that, you know, a lot of the, the action items aren't quite as um, you know, pedestrian or bicycle centric as we might hope. Um. And, and I do hope that we can put this to use uh, in conjunction with, you know, our various other plans and bring, you know, the real multimodal aspect to it, to it, um, you know, into more realization of um, relieving some of the, you know, walking and, and biking stresses that, you know, I think that the, 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 the stress map that you guys put together was um, really interesting and valuable. And I think that's, you know, it'd be nice to build a zoom in a little bit with those and see like where the real uh, pain points are for people as they try to walk and ride through town, but. And I think that also would be really valuable to um, incorporate this in, or at least uh, reference this in some aspects of a recreational map and, you know, see for people who are, you know, coming up hiking or biking and how they walk from wherever they park to the trails and um, you know, provide better access in those ways. So, um, but overall, I'm really glad that we have this and I'm glad that you know, I think, I think that the guiding principles are, are really excellent. So thank you guys for a ton of hard work.
Thanks, Luke. Any other comments? I, I just have one. Oh, go ahead.
Oh, just regarding the uh, the intersection at the visitor center, um, which I think is like the number one problem with traffic in town. Um. What was my question? Um. Initially, you guys had wanted a stoplight there. Um, and now is, am I wrong? It's just, it's just an enhanced crosswalk?
So the C dot funding is for a rectangular rapid flashing beacon as Jonathan described, and then the recommendation in the MTP is to upgrade that to a pedestrian signal. And that's in large part for vehicle flow and RFP will allow vehicles to, to continue uh, when the pedestrians not present. Uh, a pedestrian signal will better control pedestrian crossings in one phase and then vehicle movement in the next phase.
Do, do you mean like the, the flashing light that you see on Boulder Canyon and all those?
So that's a
like, you know, where it's flashing red or do you mean actual light, like a stoplight?
It's an actual stoplight that was only, that only turns red when a pedestrian actuates it or when a pedestrian's present and pushes the button. So otherwise it's blank and then it, it turns red when a pedestrian's present.
How does that help with the traffic flow?
So currently
Because the, the problem with the traffic flow are pedestrians and when they're there, they're a problem. When they're there, they aren't. So a, a red light would be on all the time and you drive into town at 10 o'clock when there's no one there, you'd have to randomly stop. You know, so this thing is only activated by a pedestrian hitting the button and hopefully it's timed for a while and then it goes off. So cars can move, but it's, it's, it's specifically, you know, triggered by a pedestrian hitting a button and otherwise it's, it's go time, you know? Because there's really, it's not the vehicles at that intersection that are, are the real problem. It's, it's, it's the constant flow of people on the foot.
I would argue that's kind of framing the, the whole thing wrong is the problem is not the people, the problem are the cars.
I don't mean it that way, but it's
Yeah, but how does it solve the problem is what I'm getting at. I just don't see it solved the problem.
It's more of a stop and go that's regulated versus, you know, it's just people walk up. Now, and you're right, Chris, it's not the problem is the people. The problem is, yeah, that there's just, there's no rhythm. There's no rhyme or reason.
Or overpass would be really effective.
Well, we talk about that, but that cost is really, you know, might as well build a, uh, you might as well build, build a rotary.
Carly, the other problem with over underpasses grades, right? Like getting, okay.
So the footprint on either side in order to meet ADA and, and have that ramp go either up or down would be pretty significant.
Gotcha. Well, I, I personally don't think that we'll probably put a stoplight there, but but anyway, I, I think, I think we still have to rethink this whole, our whole pedestrian crossing situation, but.
I think, I, I think, I mean, I agree with you. An overpass, underpass would be great, but, but like you'd have to run a bunch of, you know, back and forth switchbacks and I mean, I love it. I think it's the best solution. It's just probably ends up being down the road because of cost. And, and I don't mean to, you know, the people aren't the problem. Thanks, Chris. It's not what I mean, but it's, it's the unregulated flow. That's the, that's what causes traffic to back up. And, you know, it's not, it's not the rotary. It's, it's, it's the people that need to cross and then just you know, cars have to stop.
I mean, like, I, I like that we have the flaggers and that seems to work pretty well, actually. We just keep funding that and that just keeps, holds people up for long enough and then they all go together.
This would do what a flagger does.
Yeah, well, not really because it'd be like one person and then another person. The flagger says, no, 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 let's wait till there's 10 people that want to cross and then we all cross together versus.
Actually Carly, how do those actually work?
Recommends. Yeah. So the, the flasher is what the CDOT grant is funding. That's the rectangular flashing beacon, which is every time a, a person pushes the button, it, it turns into a yield. The recommendation in the MTP is to upgrade that to what would be the signalized version of a flagger, where they wait for 10 people to accumulate and then they get the walk sign and, and vehicles get the, the red ball.
And it's, and it's on for X number of seconds or whatever, you know, and then it goes back to
And you can coordinate the timing as soon as you'd like.
So it's not every time someone pushes the button, the light turns red. It's just intermittent and then people just have to wait.
Mm-hmm. Exactly.
And then when it's not busy, town has the ability just to like turn it off altogether.
If it's not being pushed, it's off.
But how does it know that there's 10 people waiting? I'm sorry to sound so stupid.
Pedestrian actuated? No, no, these are great questions. Is pedestrian actuated? So you could get a sensor version, which is more expensive, but otherwise it's that pedestrian push button that you see at signalized intersections in Boulder.
All right. I'm sorry. I just, I don't get it, but I'll, I'll
There's a, yeah, it is confusing, which is why we made a little infographic in the plan. At that recommendation, I can find what figure number it is to explain the difference between the flashing yield and the red ball. Because it is complicated.
Thank you.
More questions for Carly? If not, the motions. Any, any motions?
I move to approve the multimodal transport plan.
I second that move. Uh, the motion. Go ahead, Macy.
Hi.
Did you say tie?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Did you say yes?
I say yes, yes. My apologies.
Mine too. Trusty Maris?
Yes.
Trusty Miller?
Yes.
Trusty Larson?
Yes.
Me or Billy?
Yes.
And trustee Corbelon?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion's approved.
Approved. Thanks, everybody. We appreciate the time with that. And for that, we'll go into our next action of the evening, which is the 2024 Model Traffic. I think Jennifer Mendez will be presenting with Jennifer Matt, Jennifer Mattson and Jennifer Mendez.
Sergeant Mendez, do you want me to take this to start?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So this is an ordinance before you. It's come, we had a, I believe, a discussion, maybe two discussion sessions on this. This ordinance was approved on first reading on November 12th and it's now back before you for second reading. So this is an ordinance to adopt the 2024 edition of the model traffic code. Essentially, right now town is following the 2020 edition of the model traffic code. CDOT does these updates every couple of years to incorporate new state legislation in traffic laws. And so we, we update the model traffic code to be consistent with the state laws. The ordinance before you also includes updates from the 2024 legislative session. There is a cell phone ban that's going to be effective on January 1. Also changes related to motorcycle filtering. I hope I got that term correct. And the automated vehicle identification system. The other thing that we have added in, in Netherlands, based on your direction, is an engine brake code section. So we could work with CDOT to potentially get signs posted on the state highways for the engine brake. So that's a quick over, overview for me and I can turn it over to Sergeant Mendez for any other additions that she'd like to make.
I don't have any other additions. Yeah, it's going to be the terminology of lane filtering. I think people kind of get it confused with the lane splitting. And then the restrictions for the cell phones. Just keep in mind that will be a secondary offense of the changes of the, of what they're making for 2025. Secondary offenses, if you can, something to relate it to would be like seatbelt violations.
Thanks, Jennifer. Thanks, Sergeant Mendez. Attorney Madison, is there more you want to add to that?
No, that's it. We're happy to answer any questions.
Clarifying questions for? Jennifer or Jennifer? If not, we'll go ahead and go to public comment. Have any comments you'd like to make on the model traffic code? Now is the time. Seeing hands raised, so we'll go ahead and we'll bring it back to the board.
I move to approve ordinance six, eight sixty-eight, adopting the 2024 edition of the model traffic code.
Second.
Second, Macy.
There, Billy?
Yes.
Trusty Larson?
Yes.
Trusty Corbelon?
Yes.
Trusty Ty?
Yes.
Trusty Miller?
Yes.
And Trusty Lawrence?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion's approved.
Good to everyone. And, uh, for that, I, I just want to make one quick comment before we move on. I got a little distracted with the conversation at the end of multimedia transportation plan, but I, I will say, you know, and then multimodal, I'm sorry, multimodal transportation plan, but I think some good points were made about necessarily directly, you know, talk about other forms of transportation, but indirectly it, I'd say it does, but, you know, I just want to comment, my, my take on the, on the rotaries is yeah, they're not an immediate need, but I'm glad we have some of this stuff in place because I do think the turn lanes we can do quicker, but down the road, I, I do see rotaries coming into play more with certain intersections and I'd love to see those versus, you know, red lights, you know? You know, as, as we move ahead with that and definitely this be a CDOT thing, but we were involved working with CDOT nonetheless. It, it's, it's a constant complaint we get from people who live in our town and our communities. This is good info for the future. So, and with that, we'll go to our third, actually now fourth and final action item of the evening, the amendment to industrial use table, removing the mining related activities from the use group table. That's, that would be Brett.
Yeah. Um, so I'm just going to do kind of a quick rundown. Originally this was brought to us for some of the members on the board of trustees felt that mining might not, no longer be a good fit for the town. And so asked at one of the planning commission meetings if it could be brought up while SC group was there just to kind of get the consultant's thoughts and SC group is over the comprehensive plan and also the commissioner's thoughts. Something to highlight is Commissioner Cornell explained previously when the PC board was working on the land use chapter. This was kind of kept in there more so for the historical value and it was kept as an SRU use. SC group did inform the commissioners that many towns are reopening their historical mines as the pricing for materials is going up, but their group felt it no longer made sense for the town. And overall, the PC felt comfortable no longer allowing the use. So at our October 23rd meeting, PC directed staff to work with attorney Madison to draft the modifications to the industrial zone. And at the October, or November 20th PC meeting, they voted to pass ordinance eight sixty-nine. Currently, there are no owners that are actively mining or have any active mining or milling operations in the industrial zones. So therefore no businesses are affected. There are some people that are going to be on for public comment and I had a letter sent in to me today that I could read when we get there. But let me know, that was kind of like a very quick rundown. Let me know if you guys have any questions or would like any more information on this. And so essentially we would be not, no longer be allowing this use, just to summarize that. In the industrial zone, I should add that as well.
Thanks, Brett. Appreciate that. Any clarifying questions for Brett?
I noticed, sorry, I have a question, Brett. This is Chris.
Go for it.
I noticed in the changes to the use tables, obviously there's the restriction of removing the industrial zone use for mining activities, but it's also eliminating some language in other rows about under, you know, you know, under a hundred with a hundred tons, I think of ore a day. Was there discussion about, yeah, a hundred tons per day, you know, processing of mineral ores at the rate of a hundred and tons per day? Was that, was that discussed at the planning commission as well as just kind of a, or a blanket where removing all mining? Just curious what the discussion was at the planning commission.
Um, I will refer to that, refer to attorney Mattson for that. But I think it kind of correlates, but I'll have her explain it more in depth.
So that is trustee Larson. That's a specific language in the code. It talks about that processing. And there was no real discussion as to, well, what if we reduce the amount of processing to, you know, some smaller amount? That, that discussion did not take place.
Okay, that was, that was all I was curious about. So if there was discussion about, should it be 50? Should it be 20? Should it be 200? Okay.
Thanks, Chris. What other clarifying questions do we have? Don't see or hear any clarifying questions right now. We can always ask them later as well, but go ahead and we'll open this up to the public. See Barrel? I'm saying your name correctly, Barrel. See your hand raised? Go ahead and, three minutes. Can't hear you after you're talking.
Okay, now can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm Barrel Myertens. I'm one of the potential heirs to this property. Does this change any other zoning on the property or is it leaving it industrial or commercial?
No, I'll let Brett, but no, my understanding is it doesn't change the zoning at all. It just takes away this one particular use from the use group table. And presently, this is the only zone that allows mining activities, mining related activities. And so it would take it away from the industrial zone as well.
That's correct.
Okay, it doesn't have any mining. It never did. It was just milling. So.
Mining related activities would be include milling.
Yeah, the milling as well. Mm-hmm.
Okay, yeah. There's none of that going on anyway. So as far as I know, I think we're all okay with that.
I did receive something from Laurel. Originally she said Laurel is one of the Myertens as well. That originally there were no plans to process minerals on this land. So she had no objections to modifying the code. There was a later email that she asked me to share as well that she did receive a text message that it might cause a buyer not to be, not want to purchase the property. However, they don't really know how it would restrict our, restrict other options, whether it would reduce the value by not allowing this use anymore.
So just one That is a consideration. Reducing the value of it because of that.
I mean, frankly, I, I, I think there's not as much concern with your use, you know, your family's use of the land for mining, but it's, it really is concern for a future owner, what they might do with it.
Yeah, that's what we were considering if it would decrease the value for a future owner if they could not do milling in any capacity. I mean, if they could do a little bit there, there wasn't a lot of trucks coming in, you know, I mean, a really small amount, would that be allowable?
I think really the, the reason this all got escalated is, is no, I don't think the community is open very
It's also just to note, an SRU is a special review use and it isn't necessarily allowed as a use by right in our current system. So that would need to go through a very significant process to, for that use currently, which is probably the intention of how they left it in is a historical use because of its proximity to the creek and residential areas that surround that space. So I think So I think those would be factors in any future land use decision that would come, even if it was allowed into the state table.
Yeah, does that make sense? Do you understand that the way it's written now that it it's not something that someone could do anyway? So in in fact, any prospective buyer would have to buy it first and then they would have to apply for this, go through this whole procedure. And and the answer, you know, would come out of that process.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense to me.
Anyone who just wants to buy it and thinks they can start a mill or a mine there can't without the process and and I guess this just makes a little more clear.
Okay, well, that makes sense. Thank you.
Other um comments? Public comments?
I have a question. Um.
Um, just let's, let's, let's finish public comments unless you're.
Public comments, sorry.
We'll come right back. We're about to come back to the discussion and then you'll go first. Any more public comments? Don't see any hands, so that will bring it back to discussion. Go ahead, Tanya.
Um, well, I'm I'm in favor of this. I I honestly think uh I I would think it'd be really difficult to get a a mining operation right by the creek like that in Boulder County at this point anyway. Um, but with that, a ton of money invested into it. I'm curious if, when you guys were discussing this, was there anybody who was interested in also adding mixed use housing into the industrial table? That, I mean, that's a different conversation, but like, was there an appetite for that by anybody ever mentioning that?
Is that question for staff or for the?
Probably for, probably, I mean, probably for Britain.
Yeah, um, so there were interested parties originally in the burnt down house and they were looking to like rezone to neighborhood commercial to allow that mixed use. Um, when we did bring up allowing like some form of housing um in industrial, there was kind of this back and forth of like, does it make sense to have our only small industrial pocket have housing? Um, but I do think there was still an appetite for like this mixed use, maybe allowing more opportunities in the industrial area than currently what there is. And I'll let, yeah, John, go ahead and add on to that.
Britt, I might be wrong, but didn't they talk a little bit about working on the nonconforming residential structures that already exist there? And like trying to find a way to better handle that little um that, those parcels?
Yes, correct. Um, the conversation was those, those lots can rezone at any time if they know, if they want to come to a conforming use. Because currently they're under the same restrictions as that burnt down house, which is that timeline if something, if it were to be burnt down or some disaster or or anything along that point. Um, but any of those properties could rezone and that's kind of what the planning commission was saying is like they could approach town and rezone or, you know, maybe educating them on this, like what they're able to do. We had one homeowner there who currently lives in the industrial zone with a residential and um kind of educated him on his, like what he could do in order to make that conforming or leave it as it is. Um, go ahead, Jennifer.
Just, just to add to, um, that's all that conforms to my memory of the planning commission discussions on this. I think the other piece to add is, and another layer is the comprehensive plan. And that was brought into the conversation that you all are working on the comprehensive plan. And and the idea is let's get that completed and then evaluate maybe where if this area should be rezoned, um, or if other uses should be allowed in this area.
Okay, I just know we have a housing shortage. It's a lot of land that's industrial. If someone were to buy it, you know, you could have a downstairs industrial area and upstairs residential, like mixed use. It seems like it would make sense. It would add value to the Myerton's property if that were allowed. But I just wanted to, yeah, I'll bring it up later, a different date and get it on the agenda.
Just real quick, Jennifer, so some people were talking about actually changing the zoning or or adding? Because I think Tanya is talking more about like adding more options into that zone. I think that's, that's what I hear.
Yeah, like how we took away something, maybe we could add mixed use housing to, and not, not now, but in the future.
It, it was, it, I, I mean, the result of the conversation was, um, we, we're not going to do anything yet right now. And maybe to wait for the comprehensive plan to be adopted and to take recommendations from the SE group. Um, the industrial use could be very beneficial to the town in terms of economic development.
Is, yeah, yeah, didn't the SE group kind of say like that, that, that we would do well to preserve our industrial zone as industrial, you know, and, you know, whether or not we, you know, I don't think they've weighed in heavily on whether we add, add options to what that means, but but we don't basically get rid of all our industrial.
Correct, yes.
Other questions? PC going through this, this was handled, or this, this, they moved through this pretty quickly, it seems, it seems like, um. Anyone interested in a motion?
I move to approve ordinance eight six nine.
Second. But any discussion needed? It's not, um, Macy?
Trustee Corvallon.
Yes.
Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee Maris.
Yes.
Trustee Ty.
Yes.
You Billy.
Yes.
Trustee Larson.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion's approved.
This is, um, and with that, um, I think we have gotten through all of our scheduled items on the agenda. Uh, and I'll open up for public comment on non-adjourned items. If the public has a comment on the non-adjourned item, now is time. Seen hands raised and I don't hear anything. So we'll go ahead and move to other business. Any other business?
I have, I have a couple of things, um, just congratulations in our uh community education. We have um uh New Explorers just achieved a recognition as one of the best early childhood development centers in the country. One of the highest accolade and uh Netherlands elementary, I just, I've actually lost the statistic. The Netherlands elementary test scores are up something like a hundred fifty percent over the last couple of years. So um big improvements in Netherlands elementary right now, so. What is it? Ten percent? Oh.
Well, that's big. That's a big jump.
Yeah, 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 we're improving. So it's great that our uh our early childhood education is improving. That's all great things, maybe, so wanted to shout out some props there.
Definitely. Thanks, thanks, Luke. Other, any other business? Everyone with that looking for a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Go ahead, Macy.
Here, Billy.
Yes.
Trustee Miller.
Yes, please.
Trustee Corvallon.
Yes.
Trustee Ty.
Yes.
Trustee Maris.
Yes.
And trustee Larson.
Yes.
Thank you. The meeting is adjourned at nine twenty eight PM.
Thanks, everyone. Appreciate your time. Sorry, I had a hard time getting on.
Thanks, everybody. Happy holidays.
Good night.
Merry Christmas. Happy holidays.
Merry Christmas, everybody. Cheers. Bye all.